All right, so good evening ladies and gentlemen to the Blackstone Millville Regional High School School Committee meeting. I cannot officially open the meeting until we have one more member present, but we are going to start for informational purposes and we will, if you would please join me, and we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Whole flag is way over here. You all probably can't see it. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someday I'm gonna have somebody look that up because I don't think there's any commas in there and we all pause, 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 pause. So someday I'm gonna check it out. Introduction of members that are here.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Sarah Larkin, Millville.
And I'm Jane Reggio from Millville.
And Jack Keith Blackstone.
Matt Earnworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
And I will take this out of order so we can do what we can do at this point and invite a representative, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Thank you Jane. Good evening everybody. It is my absolute pleasure to introduce to folks this evening Ashley Burner who is the Deputy Director of Johns Hopkins Education Policy Center and Associate Professor in their School of Education. If the committee will just kind of indulge me for one minute and think back to when we started this work together in the fall, we discussed the idea of partnering with Johns Hopkins to study very deeply the written, the taught and the learned curriculum specifically in math and literacy. And we had reviewed that we would be using the findings of that research to help us launch into the next phase of our work, which we actually will hear a little bit more about later this evening through our Blueprint for District Improvement. And we are really, really pleased that Dr. Burner is here this evening and she's gonna share with us a little bit about the research that Johns Hopkins did in BMR and what we found and some next steps. So please, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a real honor to be here with you all. Many of you I have met before and really appreciated getting to know your Superintendent. And I know he speaks very highly of his board as being quite active and interested in school improvement and supporting teachers and so forth. So it's a great privilege to be here.
Thank you.
And she didn't know my evaluation was tonight.
But you can pay her later.
But by all means, yeah.
So this is the full report, but obviously we won't go through the full report, we'll just get some highlights here. So our institute at Johns Hopkins spends a lot of time working on the issue of curriculum. And the reason curriculum is so important to us is because most high-performing school systems have a very intentional taught curriculum and that all students of all different socioeconomic backgrounds and ethnic backgrounds have access to. And teachers are prepared to teach. And in most high-performing systems, that curriculum is what we call content-rich. It's not only about skills such as finding the main idea and generally formulas and so forth, but actually focusing on something in particular. And my colleague David Steiner, who was the Commissioner of Education in New York State, is fond of saying, "Try thinking critically about nothing in particular." The point is you have to have something to think about. So we have taken this body of research very seriously and have partnered with numerous states and districts to really investigate what's happening with the curriculum and the instruction in particular contexts. So we've worked with Blackstone and Millville to, in three different types of projects. The first is we've done a knowledge map of your English Language Arts curriculum, K to 5. I'll say a little bit more about that. Second, we have done a teacher survey with math and ELA teachers, K to 12, and their use of instructional materials. And number three, we did classroom observations and a representative sample of ELA and math classrooms. Please stop me or flag me if you want me to slow down or repeat anything. And so those three analyses, the knowledge map our institute developed, it's a copyrighted, soon-to-be copyrighted process that, in which we read every single resource in an English Language Arts curriculum. We read the novels, we read the nonfiction articles, we look at the film clips, we look at the photographs, the artwork, the music, all of that. And we provide a landscape analysis of which domains of knowledge, whether it's science or American history or philosophy or religion, the curriculum reinforces and which it omits. And we have graphics that show this at the unit level and at the grade level and at the subject level, the domain level. So I really look forward to your having a chance to engage with that work because I think it's super exciting. I love doing it. I do a lot of it myself and we have a whole team of teachers whom we've trained to review. The teacher survey was based on a panel that was developed by the Rand Corporation. And the Rand Corporation, their survey that they initially piloted in 2015 was stunning because it showed that the majority of teachers in this country are drawing from an eclectic, an eclectic array of materials to plan their lessons. The number one source is Pinterest, excuse me, Google. Number two is Pinterest. Number three is Teachers Pay Teachers. And they spend, teachers spend a lot of time creating and putting together their own curriculum from these disparate sources. Well, the consequence of that is that there's very seldom a coherent learning build from year to year in a given subject. We can unpack that too, the kind of questions that are asked and so forth. You'll have the entire panel with you, I know Dr. DeFalco does. Third, we did representative classroom observations in which we used something called the Instructional Practice Guide. It's the, and sort of nationally highly regarded, validated survey that asks particular questions about ELA and math instruction. So that, those are the three that we were able to undertake in partnership with your district and we had, go ahead, did you have something? Oh, okay. And just by way of high-level findings, there were three things that emerged through the three different initiatives that we undertook. And the first is that Blackstone Millville has an almost, a uniformly strong and positive culture. I can't tell you how, how striking it was. All of our team members who spent time in these schools, and I know I was here myself earlier meeting with leadership, but the schools have a remarkably robust and strong culture. The students seem to get along well, the teachers and the students have a high level of respect for one another and genuinely in the building seem to like one another. Now, that could all be pretense, but we are in an awful lot of schools and an awful lot of districts. And I can tell you that what we saw here is not just a Massachusetts thing and it's not just a small district thing, it's quite unique. So you should feel really good about that. And I think the encouraging thing is, first of all, culture is much harder to change than anything else within a school because it involves both the mission of the school and the alignment of the mission to the practices. And so it's very difficult to change and it's very difficult to build a strong culture. So this is, this is remarkable and something you should feel proud of and it gives you a very good foundation upon which to build instructional changes that you'd like to bring about and so forth. So that was the first finding, a uniformly strong school culture. Secondly, the instructional materials that are used in the classroom don't tend to present a uniformly coherent knowledge build for students. So the knowledge map in particular showed us that there's not coherent curriculum in place in the classrooms and teachers are doing admirably and the best that they can with the resources that they have. But we heard from many teachers that they were actually sharing materials across classrooms and we had a difficult time evaluating the curriculum in those grades because it was difficult to obtain even a complete list of the materials that were being used. Now let me say that the aside on that is that many of the materials that are used are of high quality. So I had wonderful books in my own children's library and many of them are in your classrooms, but it's simply that as a, as a whole, they're not presenting a coherent build so that students are learning more about the same subjects that relate to one another. And I can, again, I can unpack that. The teacher survey found that in math and ELA, teachers are drawing from a large variety of sources and are not presenting something aligned. The third, the third finding, major finding from the classroom observations is that in both, both subjects, teachers are under-challenging students. And this again is very, very common in American schools. It is not unusual here. We see this time and again, that teachers may have a great relationship with the students. In fact, that that again goes back to the strong school culture, but there were many instances in which, in which teachers were over-explaining to students or focusing on procedural matters and not the larger conceptual issues. So these again lead us to suggest our high-level recommendations were twofold. The first was that the district worked with its teachers and leadership to provide a strong curriculum. I know that DESI, the state, has done quite a bit of work on just, you know, what are high-quality curricula and which are not, which are better for students. We have worked with districts in trying to find a good match between the students and the teacher population, the teacher habits, and a good curriculum. Because within ELA in particular, there are plenty of, there are about five really, really high-quality, content-rich curricula and they would, we wouldn't recommend all of them for every district. And there's no one-size-fits-all, there's no right for every single district. So the first is to consider adopting or selecting very, very high-quality materials so that students are, have a consistent learning pattern, trajectory. The second is to allocate resources that would be sufficient for professional development on the curriculum. This is really important. Harvard came out with a study about six weeks ago that looked at the learning gains that accrue from high-quality curricula. And what they found was, in the, in the particular cases that they were studying, the learning gains of students were muted by, guess what? Lack of professional development. The average days that the teachers in the study had on the curriculum was 1.1 day a year. Now that's just not sufficient. Teachers need to, need a lot of support in recalibrating all of this. We worked with Baltimore City this past year and they adopted Witten Wisdom in grades K to 8. As you know, Baltimore is one of the lowest performing districts in the country. And so it's really important, they really put a lot of focus on curriculum this year. Superintendent has given public lectures about walking the classrooms, even with this wonderful curriculum. She said her, her teachers are still under-teaching the students, they're under-challenging the students, they're giving them too much information, they're not allowing them to have a quote, "productive struggle," which is one of the things you want to see. So those are, those are our high-level findings and our two strong recommendations. We, I'm here to answer any questions that you have. If I didn't do, if I don't have it at the ready, I'm happy to come back with, with answers for you. But I just, in closing, I would say, should be very, very proud of your district and your district leadership team and all that they've been able to do. And I'm, I'm, from what I've heard, I'm confident that you all will be able to take this to the next level. So.
We have to, we don't have a choice.
So did I, did I use up my time?
No, no, not at all.
Okay.
But before we get to questions, I will officially open our meeting. And would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Aaron Finocco from Millville.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
So we officially do have a meeting now. Does anybody have any questions for Ashley? Or thoughts or comments?
You'll probably have more when you have a chance to read this.
Well, I, so I, I'll go to the last, the recommendations. In terms of resources and time, is there anything that dictates what's, it's not like you have to pick between the two, but it seems to me that is time is more critical?
You mean, when you say, when you say time, what do you mean? Are professional development?
Well, professional development or time for the teachers to be together. We don't have a lot of professional learning time. We don't have a lot of professional development time, but also team learning or cross-grades or.
So I think that that's a very good point. There are, when you mention time and curriculum, there are two things that come to my mind. The first is assessing how quickly it would be good for the district to adopt a new materials. And there, it's really your judgment of if your, if your leadership team and your teachers, I mean, our sense was that many of the teachers know they would like, it like something coherent. I mean, teachers are buying some of their own materials, you know, and need the resources. But you could use the adoption process as a kind of unifying experience with leadership team. Or, or there are other cases where there's a sort of emergency situation and the, you've had to, districts have to adopt first and then really, really drive home the professional development. But I think you're right, that there needs to be a lot of time for teachers to become unified around it and more, more importantly, to practice. You know, it's not enough to just have a, a good curriculum, you have to be able to practice challenging the students and delivering it. And, and I liked what you said about collaboration from grade to grade because there's, there's a substantial body of research around what Dan Willingham, who's a clinical psychologist at, at the University of Virginia, what Dan Willingham calls the stickiness of knowledge. And this goes across all subjects, that the more you know about something, the more you can know about that subject. And this is in fact, one reason why we have in this country persistent knowledge gaps, persistent achievement gaps, is because they are in essence, knowledge gaps. Well-resourced families have access around their dinner tables and their travels and their museums, their parent, parents' social capital. Well-resourced families have access to more information about the world. And so if they're operating in a certain base level of knowledge, it's easier for them to accelerate their learning. And this is why the OECD's research on high-performing systems makes it very clear, if you want equity, you provide the same content-rich information to everyone. And by the way, let me just add something to that. Teachers sometimes have, many teachers have not had that experience themselves. And we've worked with a lot of districts where teachers go, teachers coming through teacher prep programs may not have had the subject matter adept that they would like. And so that's another reason for professional development.
Saw that one there.
I have a question. And I may not phrase this correctly, but several years ago, you know, reading and writing used to be a, a program, you know, hardcore, basal, and then we move out of that into authentic reading and chapter books and, you know, trying to gather as much chapter books as you can. And when I'm, when I'm hearing you say, you know, the coherent learning and the vertical alignment with reading, I'm wondering what you see in high-quality, you know, the schools that you go into that are high-performing and, you know, what that reading looks like as opposed to, you know, the movement of the programs and, you know, the philosophies that have changed over the years. What does a high-quality reading/writing program per se looks like in a high-quality, high-performing district?
So it, it focuses, so typically, you've got several factors. You have, you do have the rich chapter books, you have really, really high-quality texts. And I'm speaking of, of English Language Arts, but my doctorate's in history, so I'm a social studies geek. I've taught, I've taught high school, philosophy and religion and history, so that's my thing. But really providing, those systems start with the end in mind. This is what we want our students to know when they graduate in math and social studies and English. This is what we want them to know, subject-wise. We, this is, these are the areas that we want them to be exposed to. And then they back map it in every subject. And my children were in school in, in the UK when I was doing my doctorate as a single mother. And they were in a state school that had a coherent curriculum that was, you know, every year, every single first grader was really studying this and then this and then this. So it's, it's beginning, beginning with the end in mind in terms of the content. And then I would also say, in, in all of the subjects, but particularly English Language Arts, really combining a good mix of fiction and nonfiction that are tight. So I'm, as a, at the unit level, having something like Persepolis, I don't know if you all are familiar with that text, it's about, it's a coming-of-age story about a young girl in Iran during the Iranian Revolution. Having a great text like that, but then scaffolding it with, with geographical information. Where is Iran? Why is it important strategically? And, you know, why was the American hostage crisis so important in American political life? And just scaffolding it with information that helps students understand the text, oh, Islam, understanding something about Islam, which is very, very important to that, that novel. And then being able to, to have that conversation carry through to something they're doing in social studies, for example. There's something to be said for a liberal arts approach. And, and I think also perhaps, a high-performing system typically train teachers on the content. So, and this, the only state that's doing that right now is Louisiana, where they have actually incentivized the use of high-quality curriculum across the, it's, it's not mandatory, but they've incentivized the use of high-quality materials and then they're, they're requiring their, or incentivizing their teacher prep programs to prepare teachers on those particular curricula. Instead of just disaggregated skills. Other questions?
Anyone? If anyone.
Bueller?
You're more than welcome to ask questions.
Well, I hope you all be in touch with me. You certainly be in touch with me with additional questions that come through. And it's been a privilege to work with you all.
Thank you so much. Read that report. Look forward to it, actually.
And so we'll see, when we shift gears and we get into our Blueprint for District Improvement, we're gonna see elements of this deeply threading throughout the first two objectives around the curriculum and the instructional. Thank you very much, Ashley. Appreciate it.
So we are gonna shift the order of our agenda and we're going to go to handbook.
Sure. Thank you. So at our last meeting, we had an opportunity to hear about the handbook changes across elementary, middle and high school. And I know the committee had some questions and were, you know, looking for some additional clarity around a few, a few items, in particular at the high school being kind of the most discussed. And the two topics of most interest seemingly was around the honor roll criteria and high honor roll criteria and then midterms and finals. So Mr. Dudik, if you wouldn't mind joining us and we can talk just briefly about that.
Good evening, everyone. I have, sorry, a copy of the revisions, just so that everyone can see that, if you don't mind. Thank you. I don't have a PowerPoint today, I'm sorry. My colleagues may, I'm not sure. It's very current, new age. So once again, you have a copy of the high school handbook changes. All I put in there was the honor roll, high honor roll, language, what it read, and then the high school final exam, exams incentive program and the language that was in there. You see on page two is the changes of the sum of the valuation activities and assessment. So I just wanted to start off, if you could just allow me to speak for a few minutes and then feel free to ask any questions. So looking at the high honor roll and the honor roll from a reflective standpoint, I know there was some dialogue about what is fair, trying to raise rigor, and I know that mark of that 75 seems low. And I think in hindsight, going back and speaking with, with a few colleagues and people in our, in our building, we also looked at weighted GPA. We felt in the best interest that we would just maintain and keep the high honor and honor roll requirements as they were. So if you look at it, the proposed change was that we would have a minimum average of 90 with no more than one grade below 80. That was, that was the proposed change for high honors. And then the honor roll was a minimum average of 85 with no grade below 75. So rather than looking at a proposed change, I would like to keep it as it, as it states in the handbook, a minimum average of 90 with no more than one grade below, between an 89 and 85, with the exemption of advanced placement courses where a student can't score between an 80 and 89 to make the honors, high honors. And then the honor roll, rather than saying a minimum average of 85 with no grade below 75, we would stay with the minimum average of 85 with no grade below 80. And again, the exemption with just the advanced placement course with no grade below 75. So we've done that for two years. I know that we've proposed a few changes in the pasts, but I think for the two years that we've been able to do that, it, it seems to work, it seems to be fair. And we're recognizing those students that are, that are working at a high level, but also adding the advanced placement in there as well.
Can you clarify? Just clarify, because it says it, it read and then proposed changes. You're saying you do, you do not want the change, these proposed changes or these are different?
So I'd like to keep what it, it read. So, or what it reads. I just wanted to remind you in terms of what the proposed change was when we, when we got together a couple of weeks ago.
So we did already have the exemption of the advanced placement of no grade below 75?
Correct. Yeah. So that, that is original verbiage in the handbook.
I agree. Was, was there discussion about the GPA that?
Weighted, yeah.
So we did, we did look at weighted GPA. We, I had a proposed change there, but I think looking at it for next year, it just seemed like it would be too much to be able to do at this time and we would have to do a transition. So we would start off with our freshmen with a weighted GPA, just because of how X2 looks and is calculated. So we would be looking at two variables. So freshman, class of 2022, is that right? 1922, or 23, sorry. 23 would have a weighted GPA of like 3.4 to 3.79, which was equivalent to what the numerical grade was. And then our sophomores, students and seniors would be looking at numerical grade. And it just, that seemed a little confusing. And then transitioning that simple piece for four years just seemed a little much for, for an honor roll requirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that? So the other, the other piece that brought some discussion and dialogue was our final exam. So if you please give me a couple of minutes just to articulate sort of my thought and process behind where I stand and where I would like to go with this. So in my office, I have a quote that really So, in my office, I have a quote that really, that I believe really describes my philosophy on life and my view on transformational education. So it's a simple quote that says, "If you always do what you've always done, then you always get what you always got." So when we look at the data, data this year, we can clearly see that there needs to be something that we can be doing differently to raise student achievement, motivation, student ownership of learning. So we've talked about STAR, we will be talking about STAR a little later on. We have MCAS data, my midterm and final exams averages, the accountability measures, et cetera. Again, I think we're average in a lot of the data points, which to me indicates that we can do, we can be doing something a little differently. And just to add, I think reviewing the executive summary form from Johns Hopkins, it states that it's clear that students are often underachieved. Just to extend on that, classroom observations show that in both Mathy and the LA, teachers tend to break assignments into procedural steps, assignments, rather than engage with larger conceptual and knowledge based learning. So with that in mind, you know, I, I feel that I'm a reflective practitioner and we constantly have to ask that question of why. So what are we doing today to really prepare students for tomorrow? And how does that truly impact student learning? That to me is, is a real focus point for me. During the last seven years that I've been here, I've asked that question when we came to midterms and finals. Do our midterms and finals, the way that they're structured, really impact our students? And in what way? We spend at minimum 10 days to review, to assess student learning in the form of 90 minute exams. So we have four days of finals, four days of midterms. And if you want to add a day or two into review sessions, there's 10 days. A majority of those exams are multiple choice. They're short answers, they're matching, they're essay. We assess students, again, in the months of January and in June. So we just finished our files. So two questions when we think about impact. One, what ways are we allowing all of our learners to show what they know? Written exams, I think are one way of doing it, but I don't think it should be the only way. In the way that it's structured right now, the only way that we're asking kids to show what they know with a high stakes exam is a midterm and a final. That's written the way that I presented earlier. The other question that we need to think about is if you ask our students this question, what will we find or get? If you had an opportunity to study or learn anything at school, what would it be? And what would it, what would it look like to you? So for me, I think words like self-discovery, community connections and partnerships, experiential learning, collaboration would come to mind. And thinking about how do we show what we know? Thinking about videos and portfolios, presentations, I think all would be expressed when we ask those students. So what I'm asking the committee is to provide the high school an opportunity to really explore various ways to measure student understanding of content and skills. I'm also asking the committee to be flexible or to give me some flexibility in our days. So I would rather earn back some of those 10 days that's dedicated truly to our midterms and finals to discovery, to exploration and to allowing students to see and experience learning outside of the classroom. Additionally, our instructional focus at the high school next year and beyond will be on problem solving. There's no better way that I think that we are going to be able to develop and foster those skills, to develop those skills through things like service learning opportunities, experiential learning, and that would be days within our school year. Just to add, if we look at our blueprint on the how, which my colleagues will be talking about, that we've spent a significant amount of time on, I think this part, this opportunity really aligns with what we're looking to do. So our staff, I truly believe, has the will to take this on. And we're looking to, clearly, there's going to be some work that needs to get done. I'm willing to put the work into it because I think it's the greatest impact on our kids. But we'll dedicate our PD days, curriculum days, PLC time, to really be, build teacher capacity and develop authentic assessments that foster student agency. So that is where I stand on the second part of our change in the handbook.
So, reading the change, it changes it to the summative evaluation activity and assessment. Would the teachers still have an option to hold a midterm if they did not want to ask for a portfolio or a, a project base? Like, is this opening it up to allow them to do something other than a midterm?
This is for finals. This is for finals.
Midterm or finals? It's for both, right?
It always says finals in here.
So, is, is that still going to be, could, could a teacher say, "I'm still giving my midterm"? Or are there no midterm or finals allowed and it's all going to be project based?
So, I can't guarantee that it'll be all project based. I think that, clearly, I think this will be, for lack of a better word, I think this is going to be sloppy to start. I think we're going to structure this to be as formalized as possible with some creativity in this being a new experience for us to really learn how we could do things differently. There may be some mistakes that come along. But I think if teachers don't feel comfortable outside of that, the midterm and final, that to me, I think is an option to assess. But my question again is going to be why? Just like I would have that question about a service learning project that they want to go to, I don't know, a local cemetery to clean up a plot, I would ask why? What's the learning behind that and how are we assessing what kids know from your course?
So are some still exempt, able to be exempt from this project based piece of it?
No.
So, I want to go back to the midterm versus, because this all says final exams, final exams. And, and the change says alternatives to traditional end of course assessment. Doesn't say anything about midway through.
But some courses end midway through.
That's, but that's still an end of a course. That's still a final. It's not a mid, a midterm is kind of halfway through assessing where they are. There's a lot of, again, different ways to do that. But this, as I'm reading it, pertains to the end of a course. Show me what you.
Sure. I would, looking at that language, you could make that assumption that it's only a final. In my mind, I would, I would also include the midterms in that, in that process as well.
I, I have like two part questions, sorry. So you said not exempt. So the exempt part goes away completely?
Correct.
For the whole year?
Does everything go away except for the new, the changes? Is, replaces everything?
Like it read?
So you're talking exemption policies, attendance, yes.
If it's not, if it can't be exempt?
This whole thing goes away.
Because I also believe that our new attendance policy, district wide, is going to improve attendance rate. So when I put this in, I believe it was my second year in terms of that incentive, part of it was to go and raise our attendance rates, to lower our discipline rates in having kids here where they really valued the end of the school year in terms of that impact. And it's difficult at the end of the year to get students to go and take an end of year assessment. I'll be honest with you, well, we had students choosing not to take the final and they took a zero.
So that brings me to my question, my last question. What, what would this week look like next year with this in place? Based on what the kids just went through this week, which was, if they were exempted, they've been out of school since Friday. What is it going to look like these last five days in this building?
I, I think it could look like, I, I think it could be a multiple of things. I will tell you at a neighboring district that we just went to, they spent three days having 25 various workshops in their building where they created a raised garden bed and were using, you know, vegetables to help at the senior center, in their own cafeteria. We had, they had students that were cleaning up local parks and rec. We had students that were part of a band where they got together and had to create two or three songs. So there were various learning opportunities for two days. And then on the last day of school, it was a little showcase to the community where they had to talk about what they did for the last two days of school and articulated what they learned and what skills came forward.
But that wasn't their project, their end of course.
Well, I think that's, allowing me to not use those 10 days for finals and midterms provides opportunity for us to be able to do workshops and outside classroom learning experiences to be able to do that. So in my mind, again, I don't know where truly this could be. I think it's going to be a learning experience for us, especially in that first year. But I can see in January, we're doing various workshops where students are learning CPR, first aid training. Students are learning how to change a tire and oil. Students are learning anything from creating a video and a script to writing lyrics to a song, to, you know, whatever the case is.
Can I just add something to that? So I just, and I want to, I want to kind of just restate something that we heard from Dr. Burner in that what we are seeing in the classroom is a type of instruction that is essentially procedural and it's chunking out procedures into small kind of bite sizes and spoon fed to the kids. And that type of instruction leads to a very specific type of assessment typically, right? Which is that multiple choice, match, short answer, that type of thing. Mike, what I'm hearing you say, and it, and I, you're, you're kind of sharing a different idea too about some of the service learning and other things, which, you know, I understand kind of where you're trying to go, they're not necessarily separate and apart. But what I'm hearing you say is you're looking to create a different, different assessment opportunities where kids are applying their learning in a more authentic way.
Correct.
And that could include, and my sense is would include, some, you know, essays and some more traditional type of assessments kind of blended in there because the kids have to know how to do that too. There has to be a piece of that in there as well. But you, you said something to me that really stuck with me. And, and you and I have had this conversation around midterms and finals. How do we make this time more relevant for kids? This, school's been empty for a week. And to be very, I guess, kind of pointed, it shouldn't be. And the kids should be in school. We only have 180 days with them. And the kids that are here at, at this particular time are, are gone by 11 some earlier, you know. And so I think what I'm hearing you say is you want to reconstruct that time to make it more meaningful, more relevant, I guess, is the way you framed it.
Yeah. So I think in our previous conversation, sharing sort of thoughts, bringing relevance back into the building, and a lot of that is having students really take an interest in something that they're really motivated about and allowing them that opportunity to be able to, to do something with that. I think that's, that's really important as well. Again, I don't, it's, I'm not looking to eliminate.
Testing.
Testing. I'm not looking to eliminate essay writing. I'm not looking to eliminate, you know, if, if people, you know, matching and multiple choi- like, I'm not looking to eliminate traditional exams and assessments that we've all experienced. I, I'm looking at that process of what a midterm and a final looks like in terms of that high stakes piece, but also trying to bring back days that are just focused solely on an assessment that, you know, it's a 90 minute exam. Kids are going home half days. And part of the, that incentive of leaving half days was, was very difficult to go and keep kids into studies when they had an exam that they were super focused in on the next day. So, you know, prior, we had students here all day. But the second part of the day was, quote, "A study review session." Let me think about what study review sessions were for some students when they had their own way of being able to look at material, understand the material and be able to articulate that the next day on the exam. You know, that, that was also a struggle for us. How do we keep students engaged for a full day, knowing that the class that they were walking into was more of a review for the next day? Imagine the student that's saying, "I'm prepared and ready to take this exam now, but you have to wait for tomorrow and you have to go and sit here for the next two hours until the bell rings at 2:03." That didn't make sense to me at that point too. So again, bringing relevance back, bringing students who are excited about learning and, you know, learning something that they really are into. But I'm also thinking about students that don't do well on final exams and midterms that are very traditional. Students should be able to articulate their thoughts verbally. Students should be able to be able to create, you know, various artifacts that can showcase what they can do, perform. And I believe that when students are going out to college and career, that's a, that's a piece and a skill that they desperately need to be able to articulate their thoughts and communicate effectively and debates and, and all these, you know, various things that we've been talking about. And simply a midterm and a final, sitting there for 90 minutes and writing, may not be as impactful as something else. They still have AP exams, they still have MCAS, they still have SATs, they still have unit exams that they can, they can take with teachers. We're looking at another opportunity or another way for them to be able to do that.
Do you want me to?
Well, so my concern is that, I, I'm hearing the procedural part and I'm listening to all the information that was just given to us. And I'm reading here, students will continue to take paper based assessments throughout the school year. But doesn't, isn't that contradicting what we're saying right now for a midterm and an end of the year, saying that we need more authentic assessments? So I know we're talking about mid or end of the year assessments, but I'm seeing a bigger concern that throughout the year, we want more authentic learning. We want more project based learning. So my struggle right now is that we're talking about midterm or end of the year, whatever it may be, that end result. Whereas the authentic learning that should be taking place should be throughout the entire year to engage the students. And we have a line that says they will continue to take paper based assessments throughout the year, which is kind of contradicting what, what we're trying to get away from with these project based, you know, end of the year assessments per se. So my struggle right now is that, you know, we're talking end of the year assessments, we're talking keeping the students in for the however many extra days and make it more impactful for the students. But the assessments and the high quality, higher level of Bloom's taxonomy is, seems to be the disconnect throughout the year. You know what I mean? Like, I, I'm thinking all year, they're going to take these paper based, paper based, paper based. And then here, you're going to do a project at the end of the year. So where's the connection between what's being proposed and what happens throughout the year?
But if developed properly, you know, if developed through the process, it's a process that builds upon. So having just experienced kind of a performance based appraisal, if you will, it, it took kind of that assessment of unit stuff throughout the time and then there was a PowerPoint presentation and a, a video blog and a, you know, and a this and a that and a this and a that. That built on all of those pieces to this cumulative, you know, here's, here's what I got.
That's what I'm saying right now. I, I agree with you 100%. We're missing that buildup. We're seeing, right here, it says still, they're still taking paper based, you know, the trial and error, I worry, is coming at a, at final assessment. Whereas the trial and error of a new program like this would, I, I would think be more trial and error, come present, see what works, what didn't work, before you put it as a final assessment, I guess. So I'm just seeing this as a buildup of, you know, paper based assessments, which are procedural, you know, check ins, whatever you want to call them. And then the end of the year, a project. Whereas if it's built upon a process of, you know, trial and error and building upon project based learning, you know, you see an end of the year assessment as, okay, this is, this is, I've been doing this all year. I guess that's where my struggle is.
Yeah. I don't really know if Mike means it verbatim.
Right, I took that as like a reassurance that we're not going to.
Get rid of tests all together.
Everybody's just gonna do a project.
Right, and I think there should definitely be, I, I'm, I'm. Right, and I think there should definitely be, I, I'm, I'm definitely think there should be assessments. I've said that, you know, before, that, you know, you go to be a lawyer, you have to take an assessment. You go to be a teacher, you go to be an electrician, you all have to take what I'm, my, my struggle right now is that the teaching and learning, you know, throughout the year should be somewhat consistent to what the expectation is with a final. So that's-
And I think there is a, there is a smoother transition than I think what people are, are hearing, sensing or feeling. Like I, our teachers are taking this every single day and they're creating authentic assessments for students on chapter, you know, chapter and end of unit, units of study. It's happening now where, we're, we're not just a paper-based school. We're not just giving traditional assessments. I think teachers have heard me talk about how do we bring relevance back into our classrooms? What do we do on, you know, that, that last week prior to February break? Where kids just want to go home for vacation. They're creating opportunities for students to really engage in the material. So I think the end of year assessment will, will be a culmination and a summary of what students have been doing in pockets. This just creates more of a, a formal process behind it.
Tam.
So I, I guess I want to address the paper-based assessment. I, I think the day and age of multiple choice questions at the high school, that ship has sailed, you know, like. So while I, I, it was my point probably that that line was added, that I do think kids, young adults, need the experience of a paper-based test because in many cases, that's what you do get at college. But I don't think the college exam tends to be at this point in time, multiple choice. It's more sort of an, you know, the upper levels of Bloom's and taxonomy that you're saying here in that here's this character from this book, how does that relate to something in your own life? And, and then you're developing through that with, you know, the standards. So when, when I say paper-based, when, when you first presented this, Mike, I sort of think just the, project-based are great. And, and my biggest concern with the project-based is not assessing it. I think when you just kind of wing that project-based assessment, and, and I appreciate that you said you're going to work on that. I mean, what are the rubrics or what, what, how are you going to measure that? So that if, if there's an English nine class here and they're giving the same assessment here, how do those, how, how do we get some calibration between the scores of the two teachers for that type of assignment? And so that's where my concern is, how do you measure it? How do we get, sure, it's an authentic-based assessment, but how, what's the measurement? And how does that become a quality measurement? So, and, and I just, like I said, wanted to clarify my point on paper-based. I think you, you do have to have some level of that. I don't think it should be a Scantron true and false or multiple choice because they just regurgitate. I mean, that's the basic level of learning right there. So I just, my biggest concern, I think you address when you say that during the PD days, you'll develop some sort of, develop the assessments together. And I'm assuming that you will also develop the measurement of those assess, those assessments that you're thinking of, so.
So I would just like to add to Tammy, as the measurement, what is the weight of the grade? For, because right now their midterm is a midterm grade and their final, it's not in that quarter of study. So where does this fall?
Is that determined in the handbook or is that?
It's, it's a separate spot on the report card right now. So I, I'm just curious where-
In a midterm, that's worth 10%.
Is this going to become their, their final, is this going to be a graded project?
You're not making any recommendations to that change, to change it out, right?
10%.
So the kids that were exempt and didn't, so I'm just trying to understand this process.
There is no exemption in the process.
And it's going to be a separate grade for that one assessment, one project or portfolio or, and it's going to be where the final grade was or midterm grade?
Because I'm assuming that's still inherited somewhere in the handbook, what counts as well.
Right, yeah, and there were notes.
But, so, but if there's no change and you're not having a final exam, you have to change it. If, if the other language of the handbook says something is 40% and the final exam is 10%, and now you don't have a final exam, that language needs to coincide with this.
You still have a summative evaluation, you still have an assessment. Because you're not calling it an exam, you still have an assessment.
But what's the weight of it?
But what's the language of the other thing?
What is the weight of that one thing? And where is that grade impacting the student?
I mean, I think that's, it warrants further reflection on what that should look like. Currently, we have a final assessment and a midterm that's worth 10%. But not everyone receives a 10% worth midterm and final because students are fourth quarter internship right now. There's no 10% at the final. So we just, in, in place of the 10%, it's 25% of the quarter grade. So right now, it's 20, 20, 20, 20, but 10% on midterm and finals. I, I think it warrants further reflection on, do we replace a traditional midterm and final with an authentic assessment in every single subject? Or do we build that into a quarterly grade?
So from, from what I understood, your, that, that's a non-issue. Because all the students are participating in that midterm and that final project and the weight is the weight that it is, right? Whether it's 10% or whatever it is. So I didn't understand that to be changing at all. I understood the engagement of all kids being different and I understood the type of work that the kids are doing during that time to be different. But I didn't understand, Mike, anything in, in your proposal to be changing any of the, you know, the weight or any of that. I, I suppose I didn't mean it couldn't, I just didn't understand that to be an issue or a change.
Yeah, I don't think we had that conversation in terms of how the weight would look like to, to, to look at a final, final grade. I mean, if there's a recommendation in terms of how we score, it's not in the handbook, but it's in our faculty handbook where we recommend, you know, what a mid, well, the midterm and final is worth 10%. We also provide recommendations in terms of how much homework and how much participation and how much, you know, traditional chapter exams are, but those are recommended guidelines. We don't mandate that with the teachers.
So would you be changing the language of that recommendation to the summative? Versus, because there's no, you're eliminating midterm and final.
I would, I would ask your feedback in terms of that.
Well, final would be a sign here.
It would be, that is a fun, it is just a different, it's just a different name.
How they were doing it and all kids were doing it. I don't, I don't think it's, yeah.
I think, I think we are getting very complicated.
Would they do one of these every subject?
Getting it out of the weeds.
Potentially.
Potentially.
I mean, they probably don't have a, a final for every, they don't have a gym.
See, I think the question now too is, you know, are they doing it in every subject or are we doing cross-curricular?
Correct.
Like what's going to prevent, I mean, if we put a guideline on that, then we're pigeonholing what we're allowing kids to do. I mean, the other day, we were just talking about this. Literally, a biology class was doing a very similar project to what the Spanish class was doing in terms of body diagrams. But they, they did it a month apart where there was a body diagram where they looked at the anatomy and they're studying the anatomy and physiology of that and they had to label that and describe. And a month earlier, they were doing something very similar, but it was in Spanish and they were learning the Spanish vocabulary. If we go and pigeonhole and say we have to have an assessment, midterm and a final for each subject and that cross-curricular, you know, made, it's not an, we don't have separate assessments, we could combine. And I think that's an opportunity to be able to explore that piece.
And that goes right to what the John Hopkins person's just said to us that it needs to be multi-based and hit from different things. I, I just want to say something. I, I have been on this committee for a very long time and I know this is a systematic change in what people are, are used to. It is a direction that a lot of institutions are going in. And I know it's hard to wrap your hands around it when it's not built. But I do know it needs an opportunity to be built. And I have, since I have been on this committee, asked you, what do you need? We always focus on the elementary schools, we always talk about teachers and class sizes and we always say to you, what do you need? And we always are the first ones to cut what you need because, you know, we can't have a wave machine, right? A wave machine or whatever. So today you are telling us what you need and you need an opportunity to try something different. You need an opportunity to let the students learn and get excited about their learning and show what they're learning. I, for one, think we need to support that. What that looks like in their grades, you know, hopefully you'll continue to report that to us and, and let us know and, and see how the package comes together. But, and I know it's taking a risk, I know it's an uncomfortable risk. But I, I do think, as I have watched it in other places, I, I, there's some excitement there. And I think some of the, the school you visited in California, you probably saw a lot of this stuff. And, you know, I just, I think, I think you build a better connection to the students and their school and their learning. So I, for one, would like to support you for something you're not asking for money for.
Well, I also think it would be a good opportunity for part of the school improvement plan to be a piece of this. Because then they can report, you know, you can report back to us and share out, you know, what worked, what didn't work. You know, because this is a big transitional piece. So it should essentially be worked into the school improvement plan. Because it does talk about the things from John Hopkins. It does talk about, you know, making assessments cohesive, you know, throughout the, you know, English, let's say. So if it was part of the school improvement plan, we'd be able to see, how did this come about? You know, how did it go? And it doesn't always have to go perfect, but at least it might seal things together for us and really see, we're not just approving a policy in a handbook, but we're seeing an outcome. And, and I would like to see that so that I can see the, the full circle of what's being requested. And it, and it does back up the things that John Hopkins just shared with us.
It does, yeah.
I would like, I would like to see that as a, as a, a piece of that school improvement.
And you'll see it in our blueprint too. I mean, it's, the assessment piece is embedded in that as well around the curriculum and the structure mark. So it's there. And those innovative and authentic types of learning opportunities, I mean, those are the things we're talking about.
So I guess my question is, my last question on this, on this section only, is why, why eliminate the exemption piece? Like because to me, that was always making the kids strive for that rigor, you know, that was pushing them to have that higher grade for the, the semesters. Why, why eliminate that? Why can't we do both is, would be my.
I mean, I'm just, I'm trying to reflect on that right now for you.
How many days though do you men, I mean, time on learning?
It doesn't mean they have exemption from the project, doesn't mean they have to have the absence. They, I don't, that doesn't have to go hand in hand.
I think, I think earlier, the, the incentive worked well with attendance. I think the attendance policy did increase. Like you saw kids here, they were pushing for higher grades. But I think the further along we went, we saw more medical notes to go and excuse absences. So in the language in the handbook, so we had students that missed 14, 15, 16 days semester two, but they were all excused. So looking at the language and how that, that they were exempt, that didn't improve attendance in that point. I think having finally a district protocol, when we look at, and that's aligned K-12, that will help with my attendance piece. That to me, I think, is off the table. I think from an academic standpoint, we have more students that are exempt from exams than ever before and I don't know why. I don't know if it is truly kids are being raised to a level or if they're not as challenged in the second semester as they were semester one. And if, you know, people are talking about an end of year cumulative summative to assess what they know, who are we assessing? We're assessing kids that are not scoring an 85 or above and it's students that are struggling through, that are coming in. I mean, I don't know how many students we had today for, for our final exam, but it wasn't a significant amount. That, I think that, that was the challenge that, that, that came while we were going through that process. That's what we needed to, to look and revise because I think there were some holes in that.
Yeah, and I wanted to say reflecting on the idea of whether students are under challenge or not. In my experience personally and the people I knew, it wasn't that we tried to be exempt from the exams it's that they were just a byproduct of what we were doing anyway. So we just ended up exempt because we weren't missing class and our grades were fine because really it wasn't too tough to be exempt under the, under the current exemption standards. I think I took my last high school exam in freshman year.
Oh, there's a lot of different types of students.
There are.
No, I understand that, but then it ends up-
If we're assessing cumulative knowledge, it should be everybody, it's not just-
Yeah, and if I just, oh, sorry, Sarah.
Well, ideally, I mean, these assessments in and of themselves are going to have value in that they're going to be showcasing not only knowledge gained throughout the year, but the skill involved in presenting it, whether it's or the physical. Yeah, which I would have benefited from greatly.
And like I said, the last time we discussed it, it says implications beyond high school and higher education. I've written more business plans and done more group presentations in the past two years than I ever expected I would. And having done this in high school definitely would have buried me a bit more for that than I've taken two, like three or four math classes where I've had multiple choice and math answers as the questions where most of the time you're working with people writing business plans or different things that require you to work in different ways that I never learned at this building.
Any other questions? We had other pieces of the handbook. Is everybody okay with the other pieces and we'll do, go, go ahead?
It's not on here, but I, and I was not at the meeting, but I did watch it. So one other thing that was mentioned was changing the, the standard, the grade for NHS to the 95. And for me, watching it, I watched it the next day from home. And you went from talking, having a very lengthy discussion about honor roll and lowering that grade to the 75, no, no grade lower than 75. And then the next part of, of the handbook was NHS and you wanted the average to change to 95 or higher. And I sat, I was sitting there going, does that mean there, and, and the reasoning for lowering your, your honors grade was AP students? And I was like, but does that mean no AP students are on NHS? And I know they are. So I, I just don't understand how, why we're looking at that change. Because you, you were speaking at that last meeting saying, you know, that the AP 77 is equivalent to an 87. So why are we going to limit the kids there? And I did look into it just because it kind of sparked me. National Honors Society nationally, it's a requirement of 90 or higher. So why, why are we going to do that to our kids for five points? And when, you know, they're going to be those, those group of kids that are 90 to 95 that just never make that grade. But if they were somewhere else, they, they would have. So why, why are we?
Well, I think that's your minima. I mean, I can't speak for what other, from an NHS standpoint. That was a recommendation from our NHS advisor and seeing what he saw when he went to NHS leadership conferences and said, "Schools are moving up to 95 and it's, it's not a pure 95 grade, it's a weighted, it's a weighted score." So when a student receives a 78 in AP, in essence, it's, if you can do the math, it's an, it's an 87. So that, you know, we're not losing students out to NHS once they get into it. I don't know if anyone-
No, I'm just saying that opening up that opportunity for them to, to be in it. I, I, that is a question I would have asked had I been here the day you presented it.
But I will say at the NHS ceremony, for those people that were there, I noticed that it was the most deductives that we've had in my seven years.
And they earned it, they obviously earned it as well, you know. I think that it, it's, it wasn't handed to them. I think if we had doubled that, it, it shows something for this building, for our teachers and for the students. Not that we're making it too easy on them. Not that we're making it too easy on them. It's not like we lowered it to 85 and then all those kids got in. That, it's been the standard of 90, I believe, since it's been, since we...
But again, it's a weighted score. So I think, you know, when I was looking at the honor roll, it was not a weighted score of dropping that to a 78 or a 75 or whatever the case is. It was a weighted average from the NHS standpoint. I don't completely know the rationale behind it, but I believe we just had a significant amount of people, just from an academic standpoint, that were, that had a 90 or above weighted in the class. I can't speak, but it was almost like 40% of the class was eligible for NHS. That's a significant amount of kids. That's 40 to 45 kids per grade. So having an NHS membership of 90 plus...
But isn't that positive?
You know, I don't know if that's an honor or a privilege to be a part of. But that was, that was our argument with honor roll. If we're lowering the bar, now we have a significant amount of kids that are making honor roll. So what, what are we striving for?
All right, well, we'll take those three things out. There were other handbook changes. Does anybody have any others they want to...
Replacement of class officers, you were going to put in a letter in the, in their election papers, I think you said, right? Who takes over when the elected person doesn't make good choices? I think that's what I had written down. I think that's what you said, you were going to put it in the papers that that would be what happens.
In the nomination papers, yes.
Is everybody okay with all the other changes? And we'll do these separately?
No, they said in the nomination papers that it would be...
I'll entertain a motion to approve the handbook changes minus the three that we've been discussing.
Minus the?
Minus. Second. Okay, move by Wendy, seconded by Tammy to approve the middle school, high school handbook outside of the three topics of discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll go to the high honors and honor, keeping it the same that it's been.
Do we have to make a motion?
So I guess we don't have to make a motion, it's staying the same. Nothing, yeah, stay the same. So we'll go to exams, the ability, so remove the grade attendance standards, remove the exam exemptions and additional information, and change to a summative evaluation activity. I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Sure.
Seconded by Jack, seconded by Sarah. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And National Honor Society. I'll entertain a motion to move it to 95. Is there a motion?
Second.
Jack can take the second.
Okay, thank you. Move by Sarah, seconded by Jack. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor of increasing to 95, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Two? Five, two. Abstentions. So that was approved.
Did you say approving the middle, high school and middle school?
Yeah, she did.
Yeah, were they, were there different ones in the middle school?
Yes. But the only question I had about the middle school was, did they remove all the expulsion and that kind of language?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
But you roped them in together. I didn't know if I missed the middle school conversation.
No.
Oh, okay.
Was there other middle school?
No. That's what I'm looking at right now.
We can go back if you... All right, like, thank you.
Thanks.
We'll get some reports, I'm sure. Are there middle school, Tammy, is there middle school?
I think the only, I mean, the only notes I took were the fact that we didn't expel anybody anyway, so together. But that was the only notes I personally had. I don't know if anybody else had issues.
Sure, yeah, that'd be great.
Do we need Tanya? Any other down, or she's good?
No, she's fine.
Okay, they were removed and just replaced with words, question.
Okay, thank you.
Elementary?
Hi. So we just made some change, the changes that were suggested for the report card. That's actually in the works already. We submitted that actually the night of the meeting to get changed for next year. So we took out the piece that said the student learning is facilitated, and it just says, not mean the standard for this reporting period. And then the other, we did make that error on the first page where it says regular school attendance is defined not miss more than.
Oh, okay.
So that changes based on that. So those are the two changes that we had, that I had in my notes.
Did anybody have any other?
That's what I had.
Good, I'll entertain a motion to approve the elementary. Move by Aaron, seconded by Wendy. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Thank you, Jan. Christina and Steve, if you want to swap your notebooks, I guess. We're going to get an update this evening from Mr. Tringali and Ms. Shaper on the science curriculum development work. And I did send a brief update to the committee yesterday about a shift in our thinking and our plans for that. And I know that Steve and Christina will get a little bit more detailed around the specifics, but the short version of this is that we are going to be looking to give the elementary team a little bit longer to finalize their unit development and then actually have all elementary teachers in September pilot a unit. So right now, we've, and I know they'll get into the details on it, but we've had a few teachers piloting. We want everybody piloting. We need everybody on board. We want everybody to understand the process of which we went through to develop the units, using that backwards design model, those three phases of curriculum development. And I do think there's still some confusion around that. And then use the October professional development day to unpack all of that specifically by grade level, and then move forward with the ordering and launch officially the beginning of trimester two, which is in, I think, early, early December. So a slight shift in our initial timeline, but again, Steve and Christina can get into specifics. However, the secondary folks are ready to launch. They're ready to roll for the beginning of the school year. So we're about a trimester off where we thought we would be with the elementary school. But I'll pause and turn it over to, thank you.
Actually, the, pretty much everything I was sent for Johns Hopkins could pretty much apply to science as well. It was, went virtually right down the line. What had been prior to us, actually, we started the program in October. And prior to that point, and last year, everything that had been said about Johns Hopkins for ELA could have been said about science. That teachers were kind of gathering their own materials from, you know, Pinterest. Teachers pay teachers. That was really the backbone of what they did. And if you went from class to class, it would vary tremendously. Or teachers, I mean, my office is right next to the copy machine. Now, here are teachers, oh, I found this on Teachers Pay Teachers last night. Oh, great, can I have a copy? And then an hour later, it would be in that, in front of that classroom. So that was pretty much our science program. Or on top of that, it was, it was woven into ELA. They would read stories about habitats, or they would read things about weather. They would read about it, but it was pretty much, it fit into our ELA. So science was not a separate subject, so to speak. It was not hands-on. It was, you know, reading, it was, you know, workbooks. A lot of times it was tied in with like scholastic news. They would have themes and things like that. So that was what our program used to be. So we came and we started looking at it. So again, Johns Hopkins laid it out for us. That's what, that's what our science was. So we started working with a consultant and...
So we worked with Katie Clark from Teachers 21. And I know we talked a little bit about this before. So we worked on, starting with backward design. They thought, start with essential questions, assessments, and then they started writing the units. So they started, we started working as a whole at first, and then they started breaking off into their grades. So they've been writing into their grades. They wrote, we had several different people at each different grade, and they wrote one unit to start. And they're still definitely going to be taking some time over the summer to finish the writing because we have one solid unit and then pieces. Everyone has finished the essential questions as well as the assessments for the units at each grade level. So, and we have a little video that we'd like to share with you about the new sci, the way, with the piloting for the new science. We have a couple of classes that got videotaped and...
This all happened this past week. And the teachers, they were proud of what they did, but on the other hand, this is the first time they even taught this lesson. It was being videotaped and shown to you.
And the, and the kids are doing now more than they've ever done before. Yes, they, and they're loving it. So they're actually able to explain it now, so.
Thank you, Jess.
So in a habitat, what do animals need to survive?
Food, water, shelter.
Those are the three big things. So the activity we have today, we're going to watch what happens when either there's not enough food, water, or shelter in the habitat, or when there's too many animals. Some of us are going to be deer, some of us are going to be food, some are water, some are shelter, and you're going to be changing back and forth. If you start as food, you might end up at some point during the activity as deer.
A deer.
A deer.
Wow, we're a deer.
And water.
And shelter.
Water.
Somebody beat me upside, I'm scared.
Shelter.
Oh, shelter.
Water.
The deer have name tags to tell you that they are a deer, but they also have what you have, either a food, shelter, or water card. The deer are going to come to you. They are going to find a match to what they have. So if I'm a deer and I have water, I'm going to walk over there, I'm going to find somebody who has water. Whoever they bring back is going to become a deer because we talked about living things reproducing. So if you have a lot of deer, they're going to have babies. Those people that are not deer yet need to become a deer. Go and find it. What's happening to what you need in your habitat? If you were a deer and this last time there wasn't enough in your habitat to get what you needed, sit on the rug. If you're a deer who got what they needed, you're still going to stand near the window. When you're a six deer, no food, no water, and no shelter. Once you die, you become part of the habitat, you become part of like the water and the shelter and the food again. So you need to take off your deer tags. You're keeping your food, water, and shelter tag, and you're going back to the closet. This is round five. Eight deer left. We still have a bit of a problem. We still have three deer that couldn't find what they needed in their habitat. What is this activity supposed to be showing us? They are constantly changing because as animals have babies and they grow up, there's more and more of them in the habitat. And sometimes habitats run out of what all those animals need.
Hello.
So for that last lesson, they were actually doing shadows.
Well, thank you.
They were saying with the shadows cast. So grade one is doing shadows, and they've been doing that. Grade four, the one that was energy, they're actually, those were pool noodles, and they were cut in half, and they were like measuring the speed of different things.
They could make like a roller coaster, you know, potentially. They took the hollow pool noodles system and asked them to make a track for a marble system. But if you notice, did see kids sitting at desks working worksheets there?
Nope.
Not at all. That's the whole point, taking it from what we described earlier, read worksheet, blah, 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 to that. The first one, Mrs. Hartman, that was a second grade class, and actually, she has a vacant room next to her, which she uses sort of as like her computer lab, which is great. That's why you notice it was a little vacant. That's okay. She just happened to have a vacant room next to her, so she uses that for her science lab. But the kids are very excited about that, obviously.
Yeah, I think the idea was just to show that kids interacting with the materials to get a sense of what...
So there's two piloting teachers at each grade, except for grade five, which has three. We actually met with them on Monday, Monday, and to see, we kind of gave as much time as we could, and we're kind of cutting it short. So this is the last week of school. They all had a curriculum, so the sheet that you were given, that's the feedback sheet that everybody was given.
So what, we sat down with each one of them. And the first part, universally, they all, every teacher said, the, initially, they got a binder, and they're like, oh, no, I don't want a binder with activities. But yet, they're extremely well done. Every single one of them said that the writers had done a fantastic job. They had great links with videos and various assessments. So their initial, they were a little bit kind of reticent about it, but once they got involved in it, they absolutely loved it. And so we kind of went down the, you know, what went well for the students, what the kids liked about it, what did the teachers like about it? And then this still concerns me, if they had any questions or problems or, you know, fears about it. And it kind of went on, how can be improved in any materials that they needed at the end. Again, this is, this is one unit. We still have to write a couple of papers as well. But this is, you know, this is the trial, this is the pilot of it. But universally, the teachers, the writing had been done. Their concerns were other things like, is the development appropriately appropriate? Is it vertically aligned, things like that? And again, we've written one unit now, so we have to work on that. We definitely have to work on that.
And a couple of things that came up were experiments. So they're like, oh, this experiment, one of the ones was using a bar of soap in a microwave. And the teacher's like, I didn't use that. I used like a piece of ice instead. It was statesmanally, they were shown the ice cube and then it melting. So they, the teacher didn't feel comfortable putting the bar of soap in a school microwave and having, and also talked about the difficulty. So that was an adjustment that was going to be made to the lesson. So it was nice to have, the writers were there. So it was nice to have them there to be able to make the changes as needed. So after they get going, and we're going to ask them to use the same sheet for next year so we can keep making changes. And if they like to do it, some people actually did it by lesson. Some of the grades actually did it by lesson and made changes by lesson. And the writers actually said, can you just write right on the template that we gave you and make the changes right on there? And they made the changes for them on there. So we have a stack of papers, and actually, the K-1, Mrs. Allard's doing K-1, and she actually took them all because she wanted to get working on them and make those adjustments. So, so then now we start looking at materials and supplies. So we have an initial, what we've purchased for this first unit. So in this first unit, for, to be able to support six classrooms at each grade level, we're looking at about $4,800. And then we figure roughly five units per grade. Some will be less, some may be more, some may be exactly five. So we're looking at about $24,000 if they all fall along the same path that we're at right now with literature. Literature alone was almost $400, $383.39. The bins, we're looking at, so we went to visit Shrewsbury. Actually, I don't even think we told you guys this. We can't... this. We can, we went to visit Shrewsbury, they're doing the same thing where they are writing their own units with the universal design, and then they're using Mystery Science, which we just purchased. And we went to go watch them do some experiments as well. And they were showing, they were using resort. Okay, great. So then after talking to the teachers, they didn't want the wide starlight bins. They wanted like the narrower ones because they said the wide ones, the shelves bend and it makes it hard to get the drawers out. So I said, okay. So looking at bins for roughly 24 packs of bins, would be 80 bins, would be about $1,300. And so that's what, again, with like the four, three to four drawer, tall, narrow ones.
And what we are trying to figure out is how do we want to replenish this? That is something, because a lot of the stuff is consumable. So we're honestly still working on sort of our replenishment system for that. Some of the teachers have done a great job. They basically had like a laminated card. You need these six items. And some of them are consumable, some of them are not. So that'd be an easy way to restock. And we're looking at maybe a central location to store the materials so that teachers could go there with their card and say, okay, I need, you know, six balloons and 12 of these and six of those, and just take it and they walk out with it. Almost like a shopping list. But that is, that's something that actually Shrewsbury had done. They had a room with shelves in it and had the, you know, rubber made bins and they had everything beautifully labeled. So you could just go there and replenish your supply pretty well. But that's something we definitely learned from Shrewsbury.
And the last thing for just the unit that we piloted in K through five, for, we had, it was about 375, 34 is the exact number, so about $400 for supplies, for experimental supplies. And some of the stuff we did use, tape we used from the office, rulers we had, we didn't need to purchase those. We have those in the classrooms. There's one thing that we have left to purchase for this other unit, but we didn't end up getting that far, was triple pan balance, triple beam balances. And they are anywhere, we've found them anywhere between like 50 to 75 dollars, upwards of 150 dollars. So we keep, we found a couple and we've asked Katie Clark, because she does a lot with the science where she is located, and she has said that she, the one we had looked at was about 70 dollars, was pretty good. So, so that's, we need a few for our classroom. So that's kind of where we stand for that estimate for where we're going to be for after the five units.
And the whole professional development, you know, Jason had talked about that. So initially, the teachers feeling a lot of pressure, they have to finish it by tomorrow, really, last day. But we said, we're going to stretch this into the following more. And we're going to give, instead of just select teachers, all the teachers are given a chance to go through the units that have been written already. So it'll be, you know, a little bit of communication back and forth with them. So basically, instead of cramming it to now, it's going to go probably through October at least, October, November. And meantime, the writers are going to continue to write the other units. But, and then we'll have to, Christina and I will be doing some shopping at some point. We'll be buying all these items and take it from there. But the secondary teachers are great. They've, they've been kind of, you know, somewhat subsufficient along. At elementary, it was a lot of content that needed to be learned, whereas middle high schools is really just a lot of sequencing. You know, the same, same ideas and same topics, the sequence is what has changed. So they're, they're a little further along with the elementary lesson.
And our plan is for the October PD to do all the regrouping and discuss it and train it and all that. So we had talked about possibly having Katie back to be able to support in any content material that's needed, so that way we can support our teachers as well.
Are there any opportunities for teachers to, for teachers who are not piloting to watch teachers who are piloting? Because, you know, I think for, for, some teachers are the go-getters and they're okay with being wrong and the marbles are flying all over and they know how, you know, that you develop that, oh, I didn't think they would think to put it up their nose, or whatever it is, right? But for some teachers, if they see someone else do it, then they're like, oh, okay, I know not to do that, and I know that, you know, then they can almost go through this theirself. And I think that valuable opportunity of watching your colleague, you know, and you have to make it a comfortable mix of folks, but I, I find that was a great way to play around with things over the years. And I'm just wondering if there's any opportunity for that.
Actually, when you mentioned that, we went to Shrewsbury, some of the classes did double up. They took two classes and I'm not sure if they said that, but I think one teacher's a little more comfortable than the other.
Okay.
So they kind of buddied up and the one brought the other along.
They called them their plus ones.
Okay.
So they had the person that was piloting, plus one, so they, they were also, they're learning it as well. So that, that's definitely an opportunity. I mean, we allow that for any professional growth, so we actually encourage that because that's part of the evaluation rubric to get an exemplary for a teacher to be able to model something. So we definitely encourage that.
But to answer your question, we haven't done that yet.
Okay. I just, I think it's a great, I think it can help bring those people who are not ready to jump in and, you know, feel like it needs to be going two years before they jump in, which we don't have time for that, quite honestly.
So phase one, think about the essential questions, develop it. Phase two, pilot it. Phase three, pilot it with everybody. Phase four, put it on board. Phase five, how do we make sure to do it?
We have to be in the classrooms.
Yeah.
We had heard.
You have to follow through and check on it.
How can we make sure that we budget for our, well, those curriculum sets?
Budgets for, you know, invisions and not everybody's using it or using all the assessments that, you know, people have spent a year of their time writing, you know, curriculum and writing assessments and planning packages.
Yeah, that's a really great question. And I think there's, so there's two things with, with that. The first is the idea that everybody's going to pilot a unit and it's a non-negotiable. They all have to do it. So with that, there are opportunities to work together and to co-observe, exactly your point, Tammy. And time set aside for everybody to huddle up by grade level and having some facilitated discussions around what worked, what didn't, what's next. And then we have to, you know, inspect what we expect. So if we expect it being used, we're out, we're looking in classrooms or visiting, we're talking, teachers are talking to kids, we're looking for evidence of the labs and, or the lessons in action. But one of the things that we will be doing with, just because you mentioned divisions, Jane, I want to mention it, with math, we'll be talking about with science as well, are one of those common assessments and mapping those out. So for instance, if there's four units in science, and I'm just using, you know, estimated numbers, you know, we assume that, you know, as one full unit needs to be taught, you know, by the end of, right, October, by the end of January, whatever it is, however we lay it out. There will be PLC time built in for teachers to bring, whether their projects, you know, whether they're videos of kids, whether they're written assessments, whatever the assessment is for that unit, to actually bring to a facilitated discussion at a PLC with our coach. And the coach will be having conversations with them, again, what worked, what didn't, what's next, looking at student results, et cetera. And that process, you can just recycle and repeat because we're going to be doing that with all of our work, through math, through literacy, through science. And the idea is it's that, it's that cycle of effective instruction. That's how that works. We plan, we teach, we analyze, we assess, we plan, we teach, we analyze, I mean, that just kind of continues. So.
And that was actually a discussion that came up about during our meetings with the staff is if, once we write it, we can never change it. And we're like, no, no, no. If you see something that is work, that, you know, didn't work so well, then you, we can make adjustments, but it's just not a formal, the formal review ever till, you know, every like three or so years. But absolutely, that's good teaching practice. You change your instruction. When something doesn't work or totally bombed, you need to make your changes to your practice. So that way it meets the needs of the kids.
But we will have very tight guardrails on that. I think that, that is important to message because I don't, and I do think that this is a little bit of what happened with math, was we change, 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 and nobody's using invisions to the degree that it needs to be. So I think we have, you know, we need to put up tight guardrails.
And I think when you say change, I mean, I think sometimes when you have a curriculum, the group of students in front of you, someone may not fit in that box. And so I think it's important to say, here's the unit, I'm going to differentiate instruction for Sarah, I'm still going to follow the curriculum. For her, it's going to look a little different. It doesn't mean you ditch the curriculum just because Sarah's in your class and you say, oh, well, Sarah can't possibly do that, so I can't do this at all. Well, that, that's where you, you know, you don't, teachers don't give them enough, themselves enough credit to say, I can differentiate this. My principals are telling me to do this and I have to. But you also don't leave Sarah behind. So, you know, there's following the curriculum and there's differentiating. And I think sometimes teachers feel like once they differentiate for that one kid, that they're not following your directive. And there's a balance and there's guardrails.
Sure, yeah. I think, I think my personal hope, obviously just coming out of the classroom last year, is that they'll love science because one thing that the kids last year, is it science? Is it Friday experiment day? Is it this? Is it that? Like literally every, or is it time to do experiment day? Literally every day. When is it science? And that's what we want. We want them to be excited about it, not just, oh, it's science.
But that's where you throw the ELA assignment, you know, when you're talking about curriculum, when they're, when they're super excited about that experiment, throw in that writing assignment. You're still getting your ELA piece, but they're excited to write it.
Exactly. And I think the literature that, they found a bunch of literature on just one unit, we have over $400 in literature that we found for related on that one topic in each grade. I think that's important too, because now you're tying it into the ELA piece. You're tying it with multiple discipline. So I think that's important.
And when we went to Shrewsbury, they said that science was an event then. It's a, it's a big thing. It was a big part of their commitment. They put a lot into it, which I think that's why they buddied up, they partnered up because it was easier, more hands there. But, you know, some of the lessons were long and they said, that's okay, the kids are engaged. Some of them, you know, they maybe had it written for 45 minutes and I went for an hour and 15. Because the kids are so into it and so well, so they just write that.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks folks, nice work.
There actually.
There will be, there's what they, yeah, yeah, it did. But we had to make a shift. So the budget errors.
So we're not doing action?
There'll be no action required on that item for, for this evening because we shifted the timeline. Initially, it was around budget, but we're not writing, so they just kind of forecasted.
They don't know what they want.
Okay.
Yeah.
So they don't need all that money for between now and October?
Right.
Um, yes, yeah.
Save my pool noodles.
Um, next, we are going to go through our three-year overview, our blueprint for district improvement. And so in your packets, you will find a kind of double-sided document that looks like this. And actually, Jesse's going to pull it up for us. And I'm going to actually turn it over to the leadership team in a minute, but I just want to kind of tee it up for, for them. And, you know, we've talked extensively about the what, the how, the whole child, the community. I think the.
Extensively.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, you know, the librarian in Blackstone Library knows our strategy. I mean, I think we've talked about it so much and will continue to because that's a good thing. But, you know, that's the 30,000-foot view, right? So that's kind of what's the overall focus of the district. And remember, that was driven from all of our data review, our, my, you know, entry plan, conversations and kind of anecdotes, observations, classroom visits, talking to students, to staff, to community folks, to town leadership and everything in between, of course, all the committee extensively. And from there, we are then drilling what, what you have in front of you, which is the 15,000-foot view. So this is a deeper level of the strategy, better defined. It's got some teeth to it, so to speak, in terms of really building out the objectives for each of the four areas in our strategy and what the main priorities are in each one of those areas. And before I send it off to the leadership team, who I have to say have really done an incredible job of pulling this work together. We've spent months on really defining what does this work look like and really being intentional about the data points we've used to help define this work. So the top of our blueprint, you will see our vision outlined, you'll see our purpose. And we were super intentional about the words we selected for this around developing happy, healthy, proficient students who are prepared for college, career, and community. And any one of our leadership team members can define that very clearly. The, the next piece, you, you might be familiar with similar language, which is often referred to as a theory in action with if-then statements. Our team felt very passionate about getting rid of the word theory. This is not a theory. It is our work. And felt equally as passionate about eliminating the word if we do these things because we don't have a choice. It's when we do these things. And so these, these different components will be in place. And then we will see the outcome of that. And so with all of that, I just want to pass it over to our folks that are going to just talk for a couple of minutes about the priorities in curriculum and what we refer to as the word. So just very quickly.
So we're going to talk about the what aspect, which is that we're going to develop and align curriculum to mass standards, to mass frameworks. So that's obviously key there. And again, we brought out the Johns Hopkins report.
That's pretty much the format we just laid out for, for science. You see, the top priority is we're doing science first this year, 2019. Then you can see the next couple of years, they have things laid out. So next year, they're going to do ELI. And that's going to be largely driven by the Johns Hopkins report. And then to SOF studies in grade six through 12, and then math in 2021 beyond that. But we do have a sequence. And then I assume in 2022, we'll have another look at science again. The cycle keeps, keeps turning.
And then we're going to review and evaluate the current specialized programs and resources. So with special ed, ELL, RTI, sorry, all the acronyms for, so response to intervention, reading intervention, and English language learners, make sure that they're getting what they need.
And we're filing different structures, the third bullet down there. Actually, we're doing this right now with some of our special ed and our math. We're filing different programs again to see what intervention for our, for our kids.
And then once we pilot them, we're going to identify which one and implement it, strengthen and align intervention program across each specialized area.
And through the UBD process, that's the format, the template we're going to apply to. You can see all the other years. This is what we did for science, we did the same format, the UBD template for literacy and all the rest. So that's a standardized approach for how we're going to write it. And then it's all going to be documented and put in the same place. We were sort of debating whether it's going to be a Google Doc or, I'm not sure if we have an answer for that yet, but we're going to put it all in the same place. So all the teachers from all across the district can access that.
And this year, we started looking at data-driven decision-making and informed instruction that way. And we started targeting students for special, and given target interventions. And we're going to continue doing that with a data-informed cycle to make curriculum decisions using STAR. We're going to use FOTs and PANEL assessments and NCAS.
And then just the last part, you know, through this process, we are developing, you know, building level support. The building teachers up and down the hallways, they're doing a lot of this work. It's not a curriculum director's doing, they're handing to you. The leaders are up and down the hallways, so their leads are from within, as well as us. You know, Christina and I have been tied to this science since October. So next year, they're moving on to math. I'm sorry, with ELI with someone else.
Yeah.
A little bit of a smile. And I think just a quick summary point, we're starting with the core. We're looking at the curriculum there. Then we're looking at the interventions, the resources, all the supports that are going into that and creating a systemic approach to how we do that work and building capacity of all of us at every level. One of the things that, you know, is really important to us is making sure the central service group, central office group, principals, teachers, everybody has the training that's needed in order to get this work in place so that it's sustained for kids. And then using a really tight data cycle to look to see the impact on student.
Thank you.
I have a question. No, I, actually, I think Jill will be able to answer it better. Thanks. Sorry, as she approaches. So Jill, on, on this work that Christina and Steve just presented, the, the special ed part of things, who, what level of special education is kind of putting their input on how the interventions are working or, or not? Is it just that you're kind of evaluating it, or is it the case managers and team chairs that are, because, yeah, I'll let you answer.
Feedback from our people. And right now, as I discussed before, our interventions are lacking. So there's not a lot of feedback because people don't have, they're not. If our practices aren't there, it's not consistent. But we are getting feedback on some of the trials that we did. So that's where it's coming from right now. There's a lot of work to be done because of the fact that it's difficult to get feedback when there's, you know what I mean? There's no consistency. So we'll get different things from different people, like, I don't have the resources, so I take it off, I take it offline. Or, you know, what first grade does is so different than what second grade does in special ed. It shouldn't be like that. And again, that was also with the report. So it's not just, it's about all of us, regular ed, special ed, ELL.
Yeah. So you're saying the interventions they're using in first are different than set currently?
Yes.
So there's no continuation?
Nope.
Okay, by class.
It could be by class. It could be the person next door. It is. By building, from Millhill to Blackstone. And I think that's something I discussed earlier on, that's one of our biggest.
I just wanted, when, when we're talking about the we, when Christina was saying we, I'm hoping that it is following those.
All the stakeholders.
I don't want to say lower level, but.
It's everyone.
The people who are touching the kids, you know.
And you'll see that when we talk about, yeah, so you'll see that when we talk about our section is the how. And you'll see that when we talk about, yeah, so you'll see that when we talk about our section is the "how." So. Our section is the "how," which is instruction, which is basically what do we need to do, and to get to where we need to go. Um, so our objective is to engage students by making learning meaningful, to improve their academic self-concept, how students see and feel about themselves as learners and their academic abilities, allow students to show their learning in new ways, which I know was discussed at length tonight, and also while focusing on personal growth of students. So one of the priorities is to improve teaching and learning.
So I'm gonna share with you some examples. So some of this is going to sound familiar, and that's really important to note, because I think for the first time, we're finding that there are really strong connections from central office right down to the classroom, and that is just really so important when you talk about consistency. Um, so, for example, we have school councils, and we are going to be including the voice of all of our staff members to develop our school improvement plan, which will look differently than it has in the past. Um, we have an instructional leadership team in place in every building in the district. And that's been quite an accomplishment. We started, you know, at the beginning of the year, and they are in place. Um, we have PLCs, one of the ways that we provide opportunities for teachers to meet, and to discuss student learning, analyze data, talk about teaching practices.
We're also looking to strengthen our core instruction.
So we're looking at those instructional programs across grade levels for consistency. Um, we are also looking at the progress monitoring piece to assess the impact of the programs on student learning. Um, we're also, you know, we talk about the consistency piece. So we're all using invisions, but what does that look like classroom to classroom? We have to teach to fidelity. We are also looking at the social-emotional learning throughout the school day. You heard about the science curriculum work. We're working on empowering writers at the elementary level, so there'll be that consistency piece with writing.
We're looking to implement instructional supports for staff.
We have instructional coaches who will be in place, who'll be working closely with teachers and with the building principals. We are looking at professional development, which will really be driven by our instructional leadership team. Um, so again, more voices than ever before to make PD meaningful and relevant.
Um, we'd want to develop and align instructional.
So as I mentioned before, our instructional leadership teams have been established. Um, and what's really great is that we've all been able to identify the instructional focus. Um, and it is so important to note that the instructional focus is going to reach all areas of the curriculum, all areas, including specials, every day for every student. Um, and there were, there was a great amount of input from all of our staffs at every building to develop this focus.
We're gonna continue to develop leadership at all levels, central, building, and classroom levels, and focus on planning, teaching, and learning practices.
Yeah, and we really know that it's important to develop our capacity at the district level, as well as the building and classrooms, to engage all in the development of effective planning, teaching, and learning practices.
And finally, it's to provide innovative opportunities for all students to demonstrate their learning.
So that goes back to what Mike was actually talking about earlier. Well, it's more of a show what you know approach, that engages all types of learners to apply what they know, which leads to a higher level of application of skills.
Any questions?
Thank you. Creating the space for the instructional.
So I have the whole child, which is the third box on our form. So essentially, when we focus on the whole child, which is the social, emotional, and academic needs, students are happy, students are healthy, and students are ready to learn. So just from a narrative standpoint, or just this year, we were able to allocate some funds to be part of the Excel network. So Blackstone Millville was a part of probably about 12 different schools, literally talking all day, every day about SEL, so social-emotional learning, which has become a big focus point at various schools. I think all schools were at different levels. Some have already implemented an SEL framework, competencies, they've embedded things into curriculum, which is everyday curriculum. Um, we are in the beginning stages of where that is, but we have done a lot of work with our group. We just met, I believe it was Monday or Tuesday, to really sort of draw our journey in terms of next steps for next year. We just created a vision statement that I wanna share with you guys. Uh, but right now, we have a district team, an SEL district team, and next year, we're looking to branch out and build building-based SEL teams to really think about what SEL will look like in the buildings. You know, one of the other big things that we're thinking about is how do we align and make things fair and equitable in each building? And what we found out with our inventory is that, you know, in terms of tier one, we don't really have any tier one supports for SEL. We have some quote interventions or tier two, when we think about second step or open circle, but one is at Millville, one's at the elementary schools of Blackstone. Um, so what we're looking to do is really realign and have something called. I'm sorry, so it's Choose Love Movement, which would be a tier one. It's a free curriculum, it's built in, and it is a K-12 curriculum that we're going to align as a tier one support from an SEL standpoint. And then we will be looking at what our tier two and three would be. Um, I think we'll probably transition from two separate quote programs at the elementary level, from a tier two standpoint, from second step and open circle, to probably looking at second step. Um, and then at the high school level, you know, really thinking about restorative justice or restorative discipline when we think about the SEL piece. But in terms of a vision statement, this is what our team came up with, which I think really highlights what we're looking to do. So BMR, School District is invested in establishing a safe, supportive environment for learning, where social, emotional competencies and academic achievement are of equal significance. Um, we believe that students should be able to demonstrate an awareness of themselves and others while displaying responsible decision-making and healthy relationships. So I think that really ties well with the second column of priorities. So rather than just reading those priorities, I just wanted to kind of give some insight. So I think staff, teachers, and students need to truly understand what relationships are, how do we build rapport, and how are we accepting and meeting people to, meeting people where they are? I think that's fundamental. I think the other piece is really thinking about how do we identify factors that hinder student learning and development, and how do we address each situation and child separately? Um, we also are looking at the CASL framework, which is a nationally adopted framework that most school districts have adopted, and that will help us develop an SEL approach within our community, district-wide. And then finally, which I sort of alluded to, was having a tiered framework of support. Um, so looking and identifying programs, establishing a curriculum, which is every day, um, in terms of that statement, every day SEL, and then really thinking about targeted intervention for all students when we look at the tier, so tier one, but also separately with tier two and three. So that's a summary for whole child.
Questions?
If anybody just elaborated one piece, so when we heard Dr. Berner speak in the beginning about the strong climate and culture, and she's talking about, she said the relationship aspect, what the team is really referring to is very, are very strong systems, to make sure that we've got systems in place to help with the development for our social, emotional, behavioral needs of our kids. It's not just that relationship piece, but it's very intentional work to help grow our kids as people.
Thank you, you have a question? The social, emotional.
Bridge.
Bringing the people back, whatever. But does that, was that cut that person? Okay, I thought so, but I wanted to confirm.
Only the community.
In our community, our community.
I think the town needs to come up, that's why.
Yeah, and you guys all know this, you know, we, I have kids in school, and it's like, if I didn't know, if I wasn't in school, I probably wouldn't know what they're doing half the time. So we wanna make sure that we work inside our, outside our communities, keep the lines of communication open, be transparent, which I think, you know, superintendent and leadership has done a good job this year. They need to know what we do and why we do it. Um, you know, education changed so much over the last few years, unless you live it every day, it gets confusing sometimes for people that aren't in it. So we wanna make sure that they know what we're doing, why we're doing it, so that they can be engaged in it. Um, family's the same thing, you know, we want to make sure the parents know what's actually going on. When, you know, when you get home, "Oh, it's school, good, okay, great, what did you do?" So we want the families to be educated. You know, we have two small towns here, we need to build as many partnerships with them as we can for our students and our schools. We have to give every student an opportunity. This will strengthen our schools, our students' experience. And finally, we need to continue to include communities and celebrate the success of our students and staff. You know, we had some great examples this year, we need to just kind of grow on the community bonfire, community walks, some homecoming events. Um, the community and towns need to know that by supporting our students, if they support our students for their future, the students will support them in their town, and that'll make a big difference for the towns.
And that's only gonna come from sitting there to standing here. But we're trying to involve town a lot more than we ever have before. And I think this year, the budget went through, that was tremendous.
And give them ownership, so if they, if they own a part of it, they're gonna, they're gonna participate in it more, and they're gonna take ownership of it. And if they understand the importance to both towns, from our students getting out of high school, and what they bring back to the towns giving back, I think that's important.
But I think the budget going through this year, that's a.
So a step in the right direction, absolutely.
Example of it's working, so. But it's not, it's not ever done. We need to keep going and going and going, so that's, we know that.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. But, you know, please, Matt, no, I was gonna tee it off to you to wrap us up.
I was gonna say, I actually have the next steps, but I'm not going to the podium, so. So at the district level, our initial next steps are going to be to put together action plans for each of these four objectives. So the action plans are gonna be really the details of the work. Um, and that's gonna be the work that the district and the schools will engage in through the course of next year and future years. And one of the things that we discussed as a leadership team was, we didn't want to lay out a six-year action plan, because this is an organic document, and the work needs to live and grow as we proceed. So we are going to start with a section of the work, probably a year to 18 months, but then see where that takes us, and then continue to grow the plan out as we move through the process. Um, from a financial perspective, at the district level, we're gonna continue monitoring the FY '20 budget, which, as we mentioned, did pass. And we're gonna make sure that the spending that we have is aligned to all of the objectives that are in the plan. And we're gonna make sure that we're acquiring the right resources to support all of the initiatives that we're looking to put together through the action plans. Um, additionally, as we develop a new budget and we develop a longer-term financial strategy, we're gonna be making sure that we can sustain all of this work. We can't just invest in a one-time, "We're purchasing this, we're gonna do this this year," and then not continue to revise the rest of the curriculum, or not continue to provide the supports for the social, emotional learning that we need to do across the district. So that's at a district level. Um, at the school level, the principals will work with all of the instructional leadership teams, the school councils, and their staff to develop their individual school improvement plans. And each of these plans will be focused on the what, the how, the whole child, and the community. But they're gonna be anchored in the specific school's instructional focus and revolve around the data that each of the schools has, for their own students and for their learning that's taking place in each of their buildings. So each of the plans, while they're going to be anchored to this one district plan, will have their own nuances based upon the needs of the kids and what's happening with regards to the achievement of those students in the building. As a part of the student, uh, I'm sorry, as a part of the school improvement plans, they will have targeted PD plans. The professional development plans are gonna focus on what type of growth needs to happen with respect to the professional practices in each of the building. And again, each of the PD plans will be developed internally with the help of the ILTs and the principal and the staff, to make sure that they're addressing the specific instructional focus of the school, and the actions that are outlined in their school improvement plans, and address the needs of their students. Um, and again, at the school level, even though these are gonna be specific to each school, it's all gonna be anchored back to our blueprint and our four objectives. And that's what we have for next steps so far.
And that will happen by when?
Tomorrow. No, the hope, the hope is to have it by fall.
Anybody? No questions for that?
So this is, this is the umbrella?
Yes, it's the umbrella. That's right. The priorities are kind of the big, like, kind of the big bucket areas within each of the objectives. And then the blue, the action plans will be written around those priorities. Timmy, you asked a question, and I mentioned it, but around, you know, getting the feedback from teachers. And so when we are building out the action plans, we're gonna be looking for support from teachers, from parents, from support, any support staff, from our new coaches, once they're on board. And it's gonna be a team effort to get this in place.
I just wanna piggyback also, you mentioned, this is the umbrella. I think we were very intentional as a leadership team to build this blueprint to be accessible to everyone. The purpose of this is to let the communities know what our actions are going to be, and to let them know how we are looking to move the district forward. It is an umbrella, and if you look at the specific school improvement plans and the action plans that go in conjunction with each of these objectives, you can start to drill down into the specifics. But for someone that's out in watching TV, or somebody that wants to pick up, you know, go on the internet, or maybe hashtag BMRSD blueprint, they can see right off the bat what it is that we're starting with and what our, what our general objectives are for the district. And then, again, drill down into the specifics.
And the reason I say umbrella is because I think we've missed this for a number of years. So everything was kind of piecemealed, and so we were always trying to find where the connection is between all of these documents, because there are, I mean, however many schools we have, we have a district improvement plan, like, how do they all connect? So that's why I said umbrella, so that you can have an idea.
I appreciate, I appreciate.
If I were to hold this piece of paper, and somebody was, you know, presenting the school improvement plan, I would be able to identify what part of this is part of that school improvement.
Yeah, and to your point, I love the format of the document. I feel will enable us to embed all of the work right into that umbrella. So we start with the one document, and if you wanna click further into the curriculum, we'll be able to do that, and then move into the specific action steps. So that will, that will, again, to your point, give clarity to the community as to where all of these pieces fit together.
And in spreading it out over a number of years, you know, the first year, you may need, you may find that you need more work on something, so it does give you that leniency that it's not just one year, but it's over a span.
Great, thank you.
And just a big.
Oh, thank you all.
Yes, a big thanks to the leadership team, they put months of work into this, so. Really proud of their, their energy, effort, and focus on this.
Jane, do you wanna do the warrants?
Yeah.
So we don't forget the warrants in the minutes, before he goes into the.
I can do that.
Yeah, sure, we have a lot of them.
We do. Uh, was everybody here for the May 22nd meeting?
I was not either, but.
And you were not?
They're not in here, I have the eight.
You have May 8?
Yeah.
Did we, we approved those last?
I wasn't here, so maybe it's just for me to sign.
Probably.
The 22nd or 9th.
May 22nd.
I didn't approve them, but I just would need a copy eventually to sign.
I believe they were sent, they were sent to me.
I did, I reviewed them out too, so we did get them electronically.
I'll entertain a warrant. A motion, a motion to approve the warrants. Thank you. You and your people.
Hold on, Jane, so is May 22nd the one that Karen had to leave early? That was our last meeting, right?
Yes.
So were there only five of us to start that meeting?
No, we were fine to start. We can close with however many.
I think you just said Erin and I were absent from the meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, we opened it, right, okay. Just wanna make sure we have the numbers.
Yeah, we do. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
Actually, we don't have the numbers to approve it tonight, because you're the only Millville.
Warrants?
Cause Karen, Karen's not here to vote on.
For those minutes.
Can I vote? No, the minutes were, that's why I'm just doing warrants. Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Just doing warrants.
Yeah. I thought that was why Jack asked that question. Okay.
Just doing warrants. And we're ready. Wendy?
Second.
Thank you. Move on, Wendy. Second by Tammy. All those in favor of approving the warrants, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Okay. And we'll have to hold on the minutes, 'cause we don't have enough people to vote on those. All right, regional agreement.
Because these two are not here to vote on, and then now Karen's not here to vote on what was the three.
Gotcha. But the five, why can't the five of you vote on?
Because we're not a quorum.
Not a quorum.
We don't have the two male vote.
Yeah, but you can abstain, and it still counts as a, doesn't it?
Let's just wait.
Yeah, we'll just add it.
It's not the end of the world.
Yeah, it's not critical.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just a brief update on the regional agreement amended committee, RAC.
We met May twenty-eighth with the consultants from Mars, Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, and we, um, had good representation from both towns. Um, we discussed what our priorities are going forward, including making sure that we're legal, we're in compliance with the law, and, um, addressing outdated language within the document, and then amending, possibly amending areas that address school assignments. Um, one compliance issue that was brought up involved elections. We were, we needed to look into whether we were lea- well, not legal. But, because we have our elections, um, district-wide and in April, you need to have a special bill passed to allow you to do that. And, um, we didn't think we had it. But Mike Buckley looked it up and found it. So, check one off the list. Just wanted to give a shout-out. Um, our next, oh, we established a goal. We want to be, have an updated agreement available by May town meetings. Is that, yeah, town meetings.
Yeah, we're writing this down. I'm holding it.
Write it down. We'll get it done. Um, I think it's a really strong group. There were some really good contributions from community members, FinCom. Um, we're excited to get started on the work. So, I don't know. Anything else?
Next meeting.
Ah, next meeting, June twentieth at six-thirty at Hartnett Middle School. It's open to the public. Um, we'll get to work.
Two twenty, at what time?
Six-thirty.
Okay. Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Superintendent, year-end evaluation. So, you all should have received from me in, um, in Dr. DeFalco's contract, um, we agreed upon a year-end evaluation process that would be a one-voice process, a committee that would, you know, come together and, um, give a summative assessment of his service to the district, how he is doing, and what we'd like to see moving forward. So, you received from me essentially the blueprint that comes from the Massachusetts Association of School Committee's document with Dr. DeFalco's goals embedded in it, um, as a checklist for you. So, as you're thinking through the year, and the different things that he gave us at the midpoint, and now for the end of the year, that's a document for you to fill out independently. It's not a survey like we did at the midpoint, and you have to send to me, and we're gonna, you know, tally the votes, and rah-rah, you get twelve points. Um, we will come together at our next meeting on the twenty-sixth, um, with everybody hopefully having their notes, having digested what we're gonna hear in a few minutes. Um, and we will, as one voice, evaluate the superintendent live and on camera.
When is that? At the next meeting?
Next meeting.
Am I gonna have to teleconference?
Uh, you, well, you can send me your document with a lot of notes that I can share out.
Okay.
So, having said that, tell us how you've, how you've been.
So, it's been a quiet year. We haven't done very much. Um, so, uh, it's, you know, just very, kinda anecdotally and quickly, it's, it's, I think it's been, you know, a really awesome experience so far. And it's been, uh, a ton of work. We have a great team. Uh, we have two really great communities, and I think we've got some really good synergy going around, uh, really changing the way we work and strengthening on our, um, our high points already to really help improve outcomes for kids, which is why we're here. Uh, we are here to, uh, I'm here to work collaboratively to set the conditions to help accelerate outcomes for students. Uh, and I, I hope the committee sees and feels that is at my core. And the whole reason I do the work that I do every day with a really talented team and a, and a really strong committee who's absolutely committed to the same thing, uh, which is why I think, very candidly, we've been able to get so much done. Uh, it says a lot when you're moving in the same direction. Um, and so, uh, with that, I just wanna go over, um, some, uh, each one of my, uh, goals and some of the progress and opportunities within each one of those. Um, and so, of course, we always open with our district improvement strategy, and we had an opportunity this evening to see this strategy at a deeper level in terms of what this actually looks like. Um, the format for the end-of-year evaluation is very similar to middle-of-year. So, I think with that, we'll be able to move through this, um, at maybe a little bit of a, of a clicker case.
Wendy, do you need a mid-year packet? Do you need a mid-year?
Um, and so, my first goal is anchored around student learning. And so, we don't have, uh, our MCAS data yet as one of our main data points to look at. But what I do have for the, uh, committee and for the community is our internal assessment, our STAR assessment. Uh, and you will notice that, um, beneath the three, uh, bullets, or four bullets there, uh, which actually outline the student learning goals, uh, I do mention the idea that, um, we need an internal monitoring system to really make sure that our kids are on track. The principals know, uh, that they need to be able to answer the question to me at any time, "Is my school moving? How do I know? And what am I doing about it?" Um, and I feel very much obligated, and the same as your superintendent, to be able to say, "Is the district moving? How do I know? And what are we doing about it?" at any given moment. And so, we did create an internal assessment, kind of infrastructure, to help us with that. And so, um, the data tables that are in, uh, my end-of-year evaluation documents are, uh, the actual same structure from the middle-of-year data tables, except, of course, we have our end-of-year results. Um, and, um, our students finalize their end-of-year, um, STAR testing on Friday, and, uh, last Friday. And so, um, I wanna give a big shout-out to our kids, because, um, they went through their rounds of MCAS testing, their final projects and all of that. Uh, and God bless them. They sat and took a, uh, fairly quick twenty-to-twenty-five minute, thirty minutes in some cases, um, STAR test to really just say, "Okay, here's where I started in the beginning of the year, here's where I was in the middle, and this is where I am at the end." And so, uh, what we're gonna look at are results, um, across grades two through nine. We're gonna look at ELA in math. We will look at the aggregate, so all kids. And then we will look at the mixed grade levels, the special education students specifically, and how we did in terms of student growth. So, again, um, you know, the same, uh, same data points we looked at in the middle-of-year, but we added the end-of-year, so we could see a full year of growth. And so, I'm not gonna sit and read through all the data to everybody. You can see it right in front of you. Um, but one of the, one of the areas that I really want to mention, and it doesn't show as deeply in ELA as it does in some of the other, in math, and then, of course, with our students with special needs, but grade seven and grade nine, uh, and, and I know, um, Ms. Kurt's not here right now, but both she and Mr. Dudik did very intentional work in those two grade levels, uh, based on some of the data we saw at mid-year, uh, to try to, to try to kind of close some of the gaps that were, uh, that were starting. And one of the things I might just highlight that the high school did really well was sitting with teachers, looking at their mid-year data, looking at very, uh, specific student reports on standards and skills that the kids are really struggling with, and then having teachers redevelop lessons to reteach those, and then going in to look at those lessons. Uh, and that cycle continued. And so, I share that only to say that, you know, when there is really focused, targeted work, uh, we do see growth. Now, we didn't see, uh, you know, any significant growth in, in ninth-grade ELA, but I do wanna put out there that that process is starting to, to be, uh, to be used. And we'll see some different results in math. Um, so, shifting gears to math, um, you will notice, again, if you look at grade, you know, grade seven, from the beginning of year to end of year, they increased ten, ten points, uh, percentage points. Um, and, you know, grade two, the same. We started out thirty-eight percent meeting or exceeding. We're now at forty-nine percent. And, and look, I, I wanna be really kind of bold and clear about this. We are nowhere, we're nowhere near where we need to be. And, and I don't want the committee to get the sense that we feel that we are. Um, but I also wanna underscore the fact that our blueprint was under construction. Um, this work was very, very new to our district. Um, our, our leaders, our building-level leaders are working very differently. Our teachers are working differently. And so, um, you know, with that, it takes, it takes time to get some momentum. But you can see clearly, there are, uh, grade levels where we're seeing some traction. Likewise, you can see grade levels where we have some concern. Grade three, we declined in math from sixty percent to fifty-seven to fifty-four. Um, and if you go back to literacy, we, you know, use the expression, "Aid's too late." Kids need to be reading at grade level by the end of year. And it is concerning to all of us that, at least on this measure, only fifty percent of our kids are at grade level. So, I don't wanna skirt over those concerns either. We look at fourth grade in ELA, we can see we're flat. We came in at forty percent, we're ending at forty percent. The important thing to note with this exam, with the STAR test, is that it does adapt. And so, um, as kids continue to, you know, answer questions correctly, the level of text will increase that the kids are being asked to answer. And likewise, when they start to struggle, the level of text will decrease, so that kids will get back to their kind of just-right level, if you will. Um, and so, that's, that is important to note. The other piece that's important to note, and you'll see when we look at our growth scores, is, you know, how is it that our achievement is between forty and, and, you know, fifty-five or sixty percent across our grade levels, but our growth is in the fiftieth percentile plus? Well, because we're chasing a moving target. And so, what I mean by that is, what is expected for meeting and exceeding expectations in the beginning of the year on an adapted exam is not the same what's expected at the end of the year. The expectation is higher. So, the kids are chasing a moving target. It is not one flat benchmark. We're looking for kids to hit five hundred points at beginning, five hundred at middle, five hundred at the end. It might be five hundred in the beginning, and then five fifty in the middle, and then six hundred at the end. So, I just wanna underscore that, because it, by nature of the exam that the kids are taking, it does give a little bit of a different lens when we know where the kids are kind of chasing a moving target.
Ms. Jason, may I just have a clarification? Is this, um, is the STAR assessment only being used those three times?
So, uh, we started to implement it this year for progress monitoring and for, uh, skill-specific, um, monitoring. So, I'll explain the difference. So, the progress monitoring is at any time, a student can jump on and take it and see how they did. Uh, skill-specific monitoring is a teacher, like a reading specialist or a classroom teacher, that's working with a group of kids on making inferences, can build a, uh, an assessment just around making inferences. And so, uh, we had very, very, um, kind of entry work with that. So, teachers are just starting to get comfortable with that skill-specific assessment work. And we did have some kids, but not all, that are being progress monitored.
Does the skill-specific testing trigger the higher, um, level on the progress monitoring? Or are they sort of not connected?
No, they're not connected. So, so, you, we could have, uh, we could have an accelerated learner that is in fifth grade but reading on a ninth-grade level, and the teacher could, if he or she chose to, progress monitor as much as they wanted to. They also could still build very targeted, um, assessments. And, uh, there are some interventions with it, too, um, around a particular skill that the kids struggling with. So, it can be used both ways. Does that answer your question?
This, I think so. I just, um, so this last data point is based on one test, one day for, for this group of kids.
Yes.
So, I guess I think I wanna just point that out to the, the, the parents out there. So, you know, these numbers are what they are, but if that kid had a bad day-
Or didn't feel good.
Or didn't feel good, or whatever. I mean, there's so many things.
Or it's early June and it's, you know-
When it's not a continuous product, progress monitoring a couple of times a week or something-
That's right.
For kids that are in intervention, this could be Johnny gets a bad day.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's not that culmination of-
Or they had a good day, but then aren't so concerned about the good days.
Right. And what, where we will go over time with this is looking at, uh, essentially a trajectory that's going to be provided for each kid. And so, you need three data points to create kind of a trend line. And so, to your, to your point, Tammy, if we progress monitor more frequently, you're gonna get a really good trend line that's gonna show the, uh, expected growth of that particular student.
And it'll, and it also shows the, the outlier when they have a really good day.
It does.
You know, that diamond, that's what it looks like on the chart.
Absolutely. It'll show you the bad day, yeah, or the good day, for sure. Um, and I'm glad you mentioned that, 'cause these are three just individual, unique, uh, points of time. But, that being said, it's also important to try to get a measurement of how do we fare from the beginning to the end.
Sure.
Um, on slide six, you'll get a look at those partially, uh, meeting students and then in the not-meeting. Um, and so, if we look to the two columns all the way to the right, you'll see the BOY not-meeting, uh, and the ELY not-meeting, that's beginning of year and end of year, um, and specifically for ELA. So, again, I wanna highlight, um, grade nine.
Second and nine.
Yep. You can see some, you can see some movement, kind of on our bookends there.
Yeah.
Uh, but you will see a, quite a bit of flat, um-
Yeah, in the middle.
Yep. You'll see, you know, grade four, grade five, um, are basically not moving, uh, in terms of moving kids out of that not-meeting category. But I want to highlight, again, and not that the committee needs to hear it repeatedly, but without those aligned interventions and targeted, uh, you know, response intervention process and model, how we get kids in, how we get kids out, what are the interventions we're using to close those gaps, we're gonna see data like this, um, which is why it's one of our major focal areas, uh, within our blueprint for improvement for next year. Um, and again, you'll see concerning data. You'll see grade three, you know, from five percent to ten percent, right? And, and we saw that downward trend in students meeting expectations in third grade on, on ELA to now, we started with five percent of the year of our kids not-meeting to now ten percent not-meeting. So, you can see some concerning, uh, numbers with that as well. And so, we've got a lot of work to do. Uh, in meeting with the high school, Mr. Dudik is already looking at this data at the middle school to plan for how do we receive these kids? What do we do next? And is already gearing up, as recently as this week, his staff for that. Math equally shows, uh, you know, some concerning data. The, at second grade, we start at seventeen percent not-meeting, we're at eighteen percent. Third grade, four percent, we're at fourteen percent. Fourth grade, seventeen percent, we're at twenty percent. This speaks volumes to what Dr. Burner talked about this evening at the beginning of our meeting around, you know, she couldn't pull together a comprehensive knowledge build of what kids are supposed to be learning and doing across grade levels, nor could they, as she said in her words, "It was hard for them to assess the curriculum that's being used." We have a math program, we need to use it. And that's the bottom line. Uh, and we are setting up the guardrails to ensure that that is in place moving forward. Um, that is at the end-all, be-all. Programs don't teach kids. We know that. Uh, but we've gotta start with that alignment piece first. Uh, the mixed grade level classrooms. So, this was, I know, an important factor for us, uh, and a really interesting one, um, with mixed results for our mixed grade level classrooms. Um, we started out looking at our, uh, the middle-of-year at grade two. So, these are the kids that are in the, the two-three split classroom. Um, and this was all the buzz of, "The class is so big, it's over thirty, everybody's struggling, we're having a hard time." Well, in ELA, we went from fifty-five percent to seventy-three percent of those kids meeting expectations. In that mixed-grade classroom.
At zero and on.
There was no child in that classroom in ELA not meeting expectations.
But, but to me, this is a perfect illustration of challenging a student, they rise to the challenge. Putting a second grader in with third graders, they rose to that challenge. Putting the third graders in with the second- Putting the third graders in with the second graders, maybe not so much. Putting the fourth graders with third graders, not at all.
Well, and you look at, so, yeah, and so you can see it, right? So the third graders here represented the two, three, and the three, fours.
Right, right.
So you have to, you know, pull those numbers out and aggregate those.
Yeah, figure out which, yeah.
But you can see, we started out, those third graders were at 69% meeting to 56% meeting.
Yep.
And zero not meeting to 12% not meeting.
Yeah.
And then fourth grade, you know, we're 28% to 34%. But then likewise, on the other end, those kids struggling, we also continue to struggle with that. The important side-by-side to do is taking this and looking at the aggregate, looking at everybody.
Right.
And so, you know, that side-by-side will show you how, like, you know, how just kids in a straight fourth grade class did compared to how kids in a fourth grade that were a three, four split did in ELA.
But is it too small of a group to split out the threes into the threes that were with the twos and the threes that were with the fours?
The smallest cohort were the second graders. There was, there was a, that was the smallest number of kids that were in that.
Because it would be interesting to see.
Seven to 11. Seven?
I think actually it was nine.
What?
Nine?
Eleven or 14.
Oh, I thought it was nine. Okay.
I have all the different numbers in my head.
And you're mapping it up for next year, so I'm sure there's a...
Might be nine.
Second grade overall for ELA, for, they're just good.
And at the, and at the, and they, just to, to make a note, at the complex, the second grade classes are upwards of 30.
Yeah.
So again, you know, we certainly aren't advocating for class sizes there at all. I'm not saying that, but those teachers did really good work with what they had.
End of year, 62% for all, for meeting the expectations and...
Right.
It's a nice number.
They did, they did some very good work. And those are our largest classes.
Yep.
Then we look at math. Again, look, we look at second grade, went from 64 to 82.
That's amazing.
Percent, and nobody in not meeting. And that math class had 36...
That was 35.
35. Again, we're not advocating for that, but some really good work done in terms of how they actually broke the kids up. I believe there also were quite a few adults.
There were two, two professionals in the room, and then I still also just support intervention, extension people, and so they plonked in for about 45 minutes.
So you had approximately how many adults in the room for that many kids?
Three or four.
Throughout the period? There was no more than two at a time, and then sometime for like a half hour and three.
Yep.
So it was kind of like one here, one there.
So that's still a good amount of adults. And, and, I mean, I know it's a large class size, but you still, when you have that many, it's less managing and more...
If we definitely went to begin, after the beginning of the year, after the beginning of the year discussion, we kind of moved some things around to make it more user-friendly.
Yeah, well, checks.
And then you can see again, grade three, a drop of 10% and an increase on the not meeting end by 17%. Grade four is flat in terms of meeting and exceeding compared to the not meeting that increased 11%. So that the results are a mixed bag. And again, this is one data point. These aren't authentic assessments and it's not MCAS, but it is, you know, it is the same data point repeatedly to give us at least one, one measure, one consistent measure. So then we look at the growth. And so, this is interesting, and what you'll see in parentheses is the growth we made from fall to, to the winter assessment. So we just wanted to show where we were. You can't compare growth the way it's listed here. I, I listed it this way because my sense was folks might ask like, "Oh yeah, what were the numbers when we did the fall to winter?" Because it's a different time span and it's a different expectation in terms of the ground covered, if you will, and how much kids should move. But again, growth is all relative to the kids that took it from the beginning of the year to the middle, and then the beginning of the year to the end. It's that same bucket of kids. So, what this tells us in second grade is that our second graders outgrew 64 and a half percent of the kids that had the same score as them when they tested in the beginning of year. So while it, it's a decrease in terms of how much they grew from, or how many kids they outperformed, if you will, from fall to winter, this is a much longer time period. So this is fall to spring. And the average growth is 50. So you're looking for a bare, bare bones of 50.
Can I just ask a question? So does a cohort of students stay within that cohort every grade? Or does that cohort change? Like, next year they'll go into grade three, they'll test in the beginning. Will that create a new cohort?
It does, it resets.
Or will they follow it? It resets, okay.
Yeah, like MCAS, it follows year to year the cohort.
Right, that was my question.
This resets every September on who's in that bucket.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a great question. So you can see, you know, where we are. Grade four, the growth is below the expected 50. Grade five, the growth is below. But then grade six, we saw a nice bump in terms of our growth. So we're at 62nd percentile. Grade seven, grade seven really did some, some, some really targeted work, and you can see it in their growth. So if you go back to their achievement numbers, if you remember, they were kind of flat in terms of meeting and exceeding. But this, this is where growth is really helpful, because it shows that within those achievement bands, the kids moved.
They grew, yes.
They still grew. So, so we're seeing some nice progress there. And then we see math from fall to spring. Again, grade four is of concern. Grade three, grade six is a bit below, but grade seven, look at the growth in math in grade seven. Grade nine...
And nine.
Yep. So again, it gives you a sense that although, and, and this really shows that idea of the moving target. So the kids, you know, where it may not show up in that meeting and exceeding, we're going to see that the kids are still making progress within the, within the SGP, within their growth, student growth percentile. Are students with special needs? So there, there is some, there is some urgent news here, and there's some good news. And so, when we look at our, our ELA data, which is from fall to spring, and we're looking at our students with special needs, of which there's just over 300, Ms. P G., is that right? Just over 324, 325, something in there? So this accounts for the kids in grades two through nine. We can see some progress here. We can see in the beginning of year in ELA, in second grade, we started out with only 5% and we've moved to 15, to 14%. In third grade, we were at zero, we moved to 16. So you can see some places where we made some, some end roads. The big concern for us is if you look at the percentage of kids not meeting, it's either flat or it increased. In some places, it increased significantly. Grade six, grade eight. But again, ninth grade, there was some very clear and targeted work done at the high school that actually reduced that by 20%. So you can see, you know, the, the progress that was made on the meeting or exceeding end, but the concern we have on the not meeting in terms of those numbers either being flat or increasing. And we know we have a lot to do, and, you know, Jill said it earlier around, Tammy, your questions about interventions and feedback around that. There's just not a lot there yet.
Can I just clarify? It's 324 students for the entire district, not just two to nine, right?
Yes, for the entire district, yep.
Okay, that's right.
Yep. Eight, 12.
Okay. But this only covers two to nine.
That's right. Yep, so K1 are not included.
This is even a more condensed...
That's right. And then for math, the numbers in math are not as strong in terms of the meeting and exceeding. We see flat in grade two, we see a decrease in grade three, flat in grade four, flat in grade five, flat in grade six. We actually see some progress in seventh grade, flat in grade eight, and we see some progress again in ninth grade. We go to the other end of the continuum, we look at those kids not meeting, flat in grade two, grade three is of huge concern, grade four, huge concern, grade five, huge concern. I mean, you can see it.
Yep. So you get to nine, I guess.
And then ninth grade, they, they made some really nice progress in terms of getting those students further along.
Could you give us an example of what was done in ninth grade for these big, these people moving?
Jill, do you want to talk about some of the targeted work? I know you were working closely with that team, and as, as was the principal around...
I mean, I think in the ninth grade, when we talk about that targeted work, I think, you know, our high school teachers, because I've been at the high school for a very long time now, so there, you know, there has been programs and interventions in place. I think what happened this year too, Mike, when we look at those scores, remember, these aren't just kids who come out to the resource room. These are all special ed kids, so some were included. And I think that we've also, we've seen the gains in the, in the small group setting, because I think, again, we're pushing challenging goals. I find, we used to find too often that our kids are reaching goals that are too low. So for kids to even take STAR assessments, if they haven't even been introduced to some of these concepts, so I think one of the focuses, I know in a small group setting in the high school, is what are those key essential elements? I understand you're talking about addition, subtraction. No, what are those key elements to bring the kids to the next level? And that's been a main focus. I also know from Mike's work in the regular education classroom, again, when our special ed students are in a regular education classroom and they're held to that high expectation, they're given the opportunity to get there. If you never hold them, we modify so much, we accommodate so much, we're never getting a true read on how kids are actually performing with the rest of our students. And that's something we need to do more of, and, you know, to filter how we're really focusing on those needs. I will say that our teachers in the small group definitely took advantage of our sun math, which they found helpful to target those skills. So, because it's individual, you know, you have a teacher on a screen, not that it's replacing it, but it's very focused, targeted skills that they used a lot this year. And we saw some of our teachers in special ed high school in the small group actually did more than three assessments, which I liked, because I saw, first one they did great, second was huge dip, then I saw them get back on track, so we liked that. But I think it's been very focused and targeted, and I know Mike has also, you know, worked very hard with his, within the regular education classroom to say to teachers, "How are you, what are you focusing on? I want to come in and see you targeting that." So, you know what I mean? They have been very focused interventions. So, as we can see with those interventions, it can be done. And I think, again, we're looking to be on the same track. Me and I have a small special ed teacher population at the high school, so there's a lot of communication, they're on the same page of what we're doing in ninth, what we're going to do in 10th, 11th, and 12th, and we need to bring that to the other, the other buildings and the other districts. We need to set those high expectations, give them an opportunity to access. I just fear that we don't do that enough. I think we limit access sometimes.
Thank you. Anything else on the, and I, and I know this is not a comprehensive, it's not the MCAS, you know, the kind of end-of-year results, but at least it gives a flavor on a common, consistent measure of where we've been and where we are. And then clearly where we need to go, which, again, is anchored back to our blueprint. And I can move quickly through these. My professional practice goal, a lot of the work that you see here and have seen during the year around the entry plan, the entry plan report of findings, the blueprint, a lot of that was driven from the new superintendent induction program. So, again, thank you to the committee for, and my wonderful coach. So, just getting a lot of help, a lot of feedback in the work that we're doing. And so, as far as the evidence is concerned, I just listed what was, you know, what was shared during the middle of year, and then a couple of additional pieces during the end of year that I've added to that. Again, I look at evaluation as a continuum and kind of an ongoing process. So I certainly won't read these to you, but these are the items that are listed in, you know, just a few items that are listed in as pieces of evidence for the committee to review.
And if I can just jump in, when I did give the thing in, was it January? I don't remember when I, December. You sent me a list of all the things that have, that Dr. DeFalco had done already that could be placed in the same, yeah.
Our district improvement goal for teaching and learning. Again, I certainly won't sit and read the goal, but as far as the evidence is concerned, this is what was submitted in the middle of year and then at the end of year. I just want to highlight something that the principals have discussed around, and this idea of our instructional leadership teams. One of the pieces of feedback I got from the committee at my mid-year, and I think it's important to share, you know, that feedback very openly, was, you know, this work all seems great for the leadership team, where are the teachers in this? And so, I can't reach 300 staff members myself, I can't do that. The leadership team can, and I can do that through them and through the work that we're doing. And so that certainly is one mechanism, but the other piece of that work is creating the space in the schools for this work to happen. And this work, I mean, the improvement of, improving of teaching and learning. And so, through that work is where the instructional leadership teams come into play. This was a really big lift to get these in place across all of our schools. And I'm really, really, I'm proud of the teachers that are on these instructional leadership teams, have attended quite a bit of PD with Carrie Purcell, they meet routinely with our principals, they're looking at those instructional focus areas, they've already built PD for their colleagues, and they've already run it for their colleagues. And so I could not be more proud of the work that our instructional leadership teams are doing. And that work is driven by our teachers. So I just wanted to address that specifically. And then, of course, the, you know, work with Johns Hopkins, that was a year-long study that I will certainly send the whole report to everybody. I did also take the time to review that with the union leadership, because so they have a very good sense. And the principals sent a, an email from the leadership team that we crafted as one team to all of our staff with that executive summary. All that went out Monday. It was really important to us that they heard that direct feedback, they saw it, they had a copy, and that there was a one-on-one meeting between the president and vice president of the union and myself to go through all of those findings before any of this was discussed publicly. And then, of course, the science curriculum work and the STAR data. Fiscal management. Not sure Wildser is to say, but we got the budget passed. Thank you to our communities. I could not be more humbled by the support from both of our towns and that just the hard work, energy, and effort that went into that from everybody. This was, you know, this is, this was a, this was a team effort, this was a pull from everybody on every end. And so I just listed a few pieces of evidence that, that I submitted for that. But I think the biggest part is having the budget in place before June. So again, thank you to our towns. And I, and I did send a letter individually addressed to every single town leader, the finance subcommittees, the town councils, and each of the town administrators. And would love to send one to each member of the town for their support, but instead we'll just send them a thank you. Save money on postage. And then community outreach, you know, this was a big, I remember sitting in the Millville library interviewing with the school committee in January of 20, whatever that was, 18, I guess. And we talked about this idea of, you know, really needing to be a district of work and needing to bring the communities together around the schools, and that has been a major focus. And we know that that work isn't done just through dinners and walks and baseball games. I think there were, it was a district of two, I think there were two of us there that night. One family and me with my pretzel, freezing in the rain, but that's okay. But, you know, it's really about making sure that our community feels plugged into the schools, the schools are giving back to the community, and families feel that they very much have a voice in all of that work. These are their schools. I just have the pleasure and the blessing of, of being able to lead them, but these schools belong to the towns. And so, we did send out a survey to all of our families. We, we only, you know, we got 60 back, and so there's, we're already have discussed of other ways through our Facebook Live kind of trial we did, where we had over 1,400 participants, which is awesome, and folks that viewed that, but found some other ways to get that survey out. But we did get 60 families that responded, and the results are in your, in your packet. I think just the one piece that I want to highlight in the goal, I had set a target that at least 70% of families and community members that responded to the survey would demonstrate a favorable, favorable response about the overall direction of the district, and we had 68% a favorable response. So, close. Again, very small N size, only 60. We have a lot of work to do.
I'm just, I'm just sitting here thinking, I don't think I filled it out myself.
I went up to the one call email system, and it, it wasn't one of my weekly updates, too. I did put this survey in.
Did anybody on this committee fill it out?
I filled it out.
Yeah.
You did?
Yeah, because I remember sending an email saying, "Well, this is a really hard question because I have three kids, and do I communicate with all three of them? Hmm." Only the old old. I was just looking at...
I feel badly, I must have, I missed the memo.
It would have been 70%.
Could have been, could have been, I could have been the difference. Three votes.
I'm trying. Got it, and it just.
Oh, I'm not doubting that I didn't get it. My email has 1,007 emails, so.
We will think of a, more ways.
I usually open.
Yeah, exactly. Links posted different places and that kind of thing to try to help the participation around.
Does anybody have any questions or things to address?
If we have questions when we reach out, can we just reach out?
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And I think it just echoes Wendy's question in an email, and I know, I don't know if you answered just her or if there was.
I replied all.
You did?
Yes.
But I think you should still ask it.
Oh, yeah, please.
Okay. So, are we, when we come back in two weeks, Jane, are we using STAR's data, or are we waiting to evaluate the first goal until end of the past?
We are not waiting. We have promised a, an assessment, and we'll have to do an assessment.
This specifically said state assessment, so I'm, I'm just curious.
So, it may be that we can't evaluate that goal or a portion of that goal. If you read the response, you'll see the response as well, which the response was, we, you know, we have.
But, yeah, and if I can just echo the fact that although his goal says MCAS data, which I think we still need to follow through with, it's still, he still used a measurable tool. So, yes, it was STARs, which can be covered under standard one of his evidence, as well as, I believe, standard two, if I'm not mistaken, but he used a measurement tool. What we have to wait for is we have to review the contract and use the MCAS data to, I don't know how you say that, like, so I do think we still need to hold the MCAS data because it is the written document. If it had to be changed, I would think it would have been changed during the formative if we wanted to use STARs. It's still a measurement data, a measurement piece that still should definitely be a big part of this evaluation, because this is actually the first time on my, on me being on this committee that we actually have data to look at. So, although that is very, it's varied, it's, this is the first time we actually can look at it and pull it apart. So, I think that's a huge, a huge, a nice thing to see, a nice piece to see. So, it can be used in multiple areas of the, of the evaluation, but that's specific to MCAS. So, I think that can be part of the dialogue.
So, with that being said, can I ask you, based on this that you so dearly pulled apart and put together for us, do you have a feeling of where you're going to fall for this goal when the MCAS information does come in?
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know that I'll ever really meet it, to be frank. I mean, we, it's an, it's an aggressive target.
And we told you that. We agree with that.
And we tried to talk you out of it.
I understand, but I, but, but I wouldn't lead the way I lead if I didn't set that bar where I did, because I do think that, you know, regardless of, you know, my own kind of evaluation in this, that's the bar we have to set for the kids in Blackstone. So, with that being said, I certainly respect whatever decision needs to be made with that, but I, but you will see a very similar goal next time around.
But I would like to see more, like, I, I think that's great coming in saying 100%, I mean, that, that shows that you have.
Of growth, not 100%, I mean, it's just showing growth in all.
And there was definitely growth, I think, just the attainable piece, I think, maybe 99%. But, you know, I, I just think the attainable part is, you know, there's definitely growth, you know, and I see this as, your vision this year was to get everything in place, and the action next year is going to be the tell-all. It'll be the tell-all. So, you know, I think, you know, I'm just speaking for myself, but I think with the data that we have, we have measurable things moving into next year where we didn't have that when he came here. So, I think, I think there's something to speak to that. So, we definitely should use the STAR data. And I will be honest with one of my, one of my own three that are doing the STARs, I have everything from MCAS scores to the STARs testing, and it's exact. No, no, I'm not even joking, it's, the bar is exactly in the same place as the MCAS data. So, I, I just looked up to see if Pearson was the, was the person who put out STARs, but it's Renaissance.
It's Renaissance, yes. It's supposedly very tightly aligned.
They're, from my experience, they're, they must be pretty tight, because, like I said, the bar is right in the same spot.
Anybody else have any other? Again, I appreciate you pulling that together for us in the midst of pulling all these other things together, and we will continue this discussion at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Business office.
So, I'd like to now go line by line to one of the financial reports.
Can we make, can we make them?
Yeah, oh, yeah, please.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Unless you want to hear how we're doing financially.
We can't make payroll.
Yes, we can.
That's on camera.
She's believing anyway.
Good night, folks, thank you so much.
The faculty, one of them.
I will give a, I will give a high overview.
Thank you.
If you take a look at the salary spend down report, which is the first on the list, I'll bring you right down to the very bottom of the page. We've discussed some of the discrepancies in what the salaries have been that we've spent and where there are going to be overages. I don't want to say custodial overtime one more time at these meetings.
But you just did.
Yes, I did. Said I didn't want to. If you drop down right to the bottom right corner of the salary spend down sheet, you can see that we've expended approximately 81% of our salaries right now, which at this point in time, given that we still have July and some of August left for this fiscal year with the, with the encumbrances that we'll have, we, we're pretty much on target.
August? Why would we go to August?
Full-time employees.
Full-time employees.
Yeah, but August would be a new fiscal year.
Part, no, part, the part of our, part of August will be accrued payroll. So, we go, the first.
I wasn't going to ask you that question.
But we're still on target to continue to make payroll. If you look at the cost center review report, are there any questions about this? As I said, we've discussed those, some of the discrepancies. The cost center review report also, we still are projecting that we are going to come in slightly under what we expected to expend through the course of the year. There have been a number of unexpected expenses, so this is not a bad place to be. As Dr. DeFalco and I discussed, I mean, this looks like, you know, a significant number, but when you're talking about a 20, $25 million budget, that's like a partial, a part of a percent. So, but we're, that's what we have to focus on, given the large part of our budget that just goes to fixed costs and salaries, we really have to focus on the pieces that we can control.
Can I just ask one question? Custodial overtime?
You're going back.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I just, I, I'm just wondering, we, we always see this custodial overtime pretty high, and I just didn't know if there was any, like, plan or moving forward to try to lower that custodial overtime?
We did, we did do an analysis earlier when we were talking about staffing and whether or not it would make sense to add additional custodians to the, to the building. And it actually turned out that the overtime costs have.
Were lower.
Were lower than the cost of adding additional custodians. That being said, again, we experienced a, a number of major facilities-related issues given the, in the beginning of the year, and some other things that happened with regards to water, roofs. So, they were certainly higher than expected this year also.
That's just been consistent, I mean, for quite, quite a few years, and I just, it does make sense, but I just didn't know, but I appreciate the analysis.
And we, I can continue to watch that and do another analysis of it for next year. Regarding the revenue report, again, things are going well with our revenues, everything has been, for the most part, even these numbers have just recently changed since I printed this report. We've received some other grants that we put in for, for the end of the year. So, I can tell you that, not that that's a large amount, but the inclusive preschool grant just closed off, I got that $2,300 today. I can tell you that we also got another allocation from Title I. So, we got $59,000 something from Title I. I am happy to say that recently we received an update on our revenue Medicaid, which came in with an adjustment to the FY '18 administrative claim, and we actually will probably end up receiving about $75,000 more in Medicaid reimbursement this year than I had anticipated.
Sorry, I missed it.
So.
No, I heard that every, I just missed the number.
Seventy, about $75,000 more in revenue from Medicaid. And again, it was from an adjustment to the FY '18 claims that were done. Again, but you can see that we've been collecting everything as we've been supposed to collect.
And our, and our fair of athletic user fees not covering, they went over and above. Is that, am I reading that right?
The.
Athletic user fees.
That means they collected more than we were anticipating.
Correct, they collected more.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which, which would seem.
Oops, sorry, go ahead. Finish.
I lost what I was going to say.
You were going to say that we had really good sports games going on, and there were so many people that went to the football games that.
I was going to say, you may have noticed, you may have noticed that the music, the music was a little bit short. But again, they're different, they're different program revenues.
But the athletic budget minus what we budgeted, this does not cover the athletic budget, the $60,000.
It should.
It should. That's what the piece was. That's why we were nervous that they weren't going to reach it as we watched through the year.
Was it 240 versus 180 or something?
I think it was.
Yeah, I think we budgeted, it was like 180 budgeted, but it was like 240.
So, in the actual.
It was 120.
I'm sorry. Yeah, it was.
Was it 180 and 2?
Yeah, it's 180, it's 180. And you can even see, right now, with the encumbrances, we were anticipating going into the current projection, which was 222. But that doesn't include the offset from the athletic user fees, so we should be fine with regards to the athletic spending. And we're still in the process of closing out encumbrances, so we're paying off final payments on purchase orders and closing out money that we had encumbered for those purchase orders. So, we'll, we'll start to see where we really land for the, for the July.
Do we know what we have in terms of outstanding balance on lunch?
I do, actually.
About what?
I have an approximate number.
It makes illegal charges.
So, one of the things that, one of the things.
Sorry, minus two.
Last year, as both Linaya and I came in after June, June 30th, we didn't transfer any of the funds from last year's outstanding balances, and that money is still owed to the cafeteria fund. And currently, the total, the district is responsible for making the cafeteria fund whole at the end of the year.
I thought we did that at the end of last year, because we, it was hot, it was like $10,000 or something, and we were astounded that it could get that high.
We didn't transfer, we didn't transfer any funds from the general fund to the cafeteria fund, not prior to June 30th. We did have amounts, we had amounts allocated that we knew we owed, but it has to be done prior to June 30th. I didn't start until September.
And it was.
So, it was, it had not.
So, how do we pay that?
How do we do it? How much do we do this year?
So, we're at, between last year and this year, we're in approximately a $13,000 range.
Oh, so maybe we weren't at 10 last year.
What?
Maybe my number was wrong about last year.
No, I have, I have that in my head.
We've been collecting, and we have been trying to aggressively collect the funds.
Oh, so that.
That was the last update that I had. I actually met with Maureen Gonzalez, our new director of food services. We're going to be running those numbers just this week and before the end of the week, at the very latest, before the end of next week, we'll make a transfer in to make that cafeteria fund whole. I can give you the specific amount that we transferred.
Will you do a, can you do an email to everyone to say, hey, pay your balance at the end of the year? Give them a warrant.
Those go on, yeah, those, those actually have been going out through the course of the year. And one of the things that we're trying to address aggressively for the upcoming year, one of the things that we realize is a large, I won't say a, a large portion of this amount, but a good amount of the money, a good amount of money that is owed to us happens within the time that kids are coming to school, giving, being given lunches on loner, and then they're getting identified as free and reduced lunch.
Right.
We don't give out our free and reduced lunch forms until the first day of school.
Right.
They've been getting those at the start of school, and they don't get, they don't come back, and they don't get processed for a couple of weeks, sometimes three weeks, and all of those kids are charging meals.
And so, we can't go back and adjust?
We can't, it's, it's very difficult to go back to a family in financial need and say, you qualify for free lunch, but now you still owe us $200.
Oh, no, no, that's not, I'm saying, you qualified for free lunch, so we go back.
Now, this state won't.
So, can we, can we hand it out during the summer?
So, what we are, yes, so what we are working on, that's what I.
What did it tell us? Sorry. Can we do something?
Yes, as I was saying, Maureen, myself and Dr. DeFalco have been working on trying to get that information out to all of our families. We plan on getting it posted to the website, sending it out via Twitter, putting it on Facebook, everything that we can do to get the information out to families to collect those forms in advance so that we can start identifying kids by the second or third week in July, so that when they get to school, we already know, and we're getting the reimbursements for them, so.
And if they're already in the system, they carry over.
If they are, they do. They have a grace period if they're already identified, especially if they're direct, I mean, if they're direct certified, they're in already. But if they're in the system identified as free and reduced lunch, there is a small grace period for the beginning.
Otherwise, they have to re.
They still have to do resubmit, yes.
Thank you.
Any other, any questions regarding revenue?
Oh, I did, I had one question. The fiscal year '18 adjustment of the $75,000, where does that money go?
That's, it's part of our Medicaid revenue for '19. It's given to us this year. And the last report that you have, which I never go into the specifics of, is the personnel update, which will list a number of retirements, some replacements that have taken place more recently. If anyone has questions about this report, please feel free to email me directly.
You know, I have a question, I just have a question about that. That is at our table, that is public record anyway, but yet.
We just don't, I mean, we just don't.
I, I'm just so, it.
Do you want me to, I mean, I can just read the names of.
No, no, I don't want to, I just think it's, it's just a funny thing.
Yeah, the school committee, so the, the, kind of the gist of that is because they only hire and fire the superintendent and approve the contract of the special ed director, business manager, the day-to-day personnel, the school committee doesn't, we do it as an information piece, so they know, so you all know what's going on. And so, if, if you were to, not that, not that we do, but if you were to ever, you know, vote on, like, your packet and putting things on file, you would just move and place it on file. You wouldn't accept it, you wouldn't approve it, you wouldn't anything. It's just information. So, do you understand, like, we don't.
Yeah, I just laughed, I went to a recent school committee meeting in another district, and they read it, and I thought, oh, that's funny, because we don't, but then somebody said, well, if it's in your packet, it's public record anyway, so what's the difference? And I said, I, I don't know, but I'll ask next time.
I'm certainly not, I'm certainly not trying to make it confidential, I just don't ever see the need of reading.
Some districts count it, too, like, we had 11 resignations, we had four hires, we had, you know, they do it that way, too, it's like a mixed bag.
It just stood in my mind.
Yeah.
Anybody have any, any other questions for Matt? Anybody have any school committee forum issues?
Have a great summer.
Have a great summer.
And a safe, safe summer. We're not, we have exec session, so we're not going anywhere, folks.
Graduation was fantastic.
Graduation was incredible, moving. Incredible.
I, I would like to bring back up the NHS conversation that we had, revisit it, whatever we want to call it, because I found myself very distracted through the rest of the meeting. the meeting, just going through all these thoughts that I had when I was listening to it, and I, I guess I didn't get it out when Mr. Dudek was here, but, or even to you guys, I just, the, the, changing that grade from a 90 to a 95, you're not automatically in if you have a 90 or higher. So, when, when he said it was almost half the grade, first of all, they earned their, they earned their grades. Second of all, it's just, that's how you're invited to apply. You still have to go through a, an essay, an interview, you have to have letters of recommendation. It doesn't mean that everyone's in, and I, I feel like we're going to put this, our kids already have so much stress on, from academics, from social, from, and why are we going to, for five-point difference, eliminate these, this cohort of kids that would be invited to apply? Doesn't mean they have to be inducted into National Honor Society. Maybe Mr. Dudek could have answered us better, because he's saying the recommendation came from, it's actually Mr. Rowe this year, he's new this year, he took it over.
I thought he said it came from his kids, that's what he said the first time.
Tonight, he said it came as a recommendation of the-
Of the advisor.
The advisor, and that is Mr. Rowe. So, I guess I would have more questions and be, and say, well, yes, so 50% of the class qualified this year, but the interview process, the essays, I mean, there's still a lot of other pieces attached to being invited to apply for NHS, and I don't know why we're going to make it harder for our kids. They earned that. I'm sorry, but a 90 or higher, and it, they, they earned it. It's not, well, there's too many making it, we should make it harder. These kids are working hard every day, and they're doing sports, and they're doing band, and they're doing, they're doing a lot of other activities, and why are we going to take that opportunity away from them? And I just, I feel like we just did a huge disservice to a large group of kids in our high school. There's only essentially two years that they're even eligible to earn that spot. They can't earn it as a freshman, and they're either inducted as a sophomore at the end of the year, or junior at the end of their year. And I, I just, I don't think us sitting here at a table making a choice like that is fair to put that stress on the high schoolers that have those goals in mind. And, and it might be, you know, that one AP course, because they decided to take that that keeps them off of it, that's, it's not our, it's not fair for us to just say, okay, we're just gonna change the-
But that's our role.
Yeah, and I, and, and in fairness, I don't feel like I just said, okay. I, I listened to what he had to say, I listened to what you had to say.
His answer was, well, was, this is what the advisor recommended. That wasn't even-
I think he said, this is what the advisor who had gone to the national-
National conference.
Conference.
And said other schools were moving in that direction as well. You know, I, I, I think it is an honor, I think it's a designated honor.
And the kid, it's almost making it sound like the kids that got it this year didn't deserve it, and that's not fair.
No, I just think it's saying, you know, making it something that's, that's a high award. I mean, we don't, you know, we recognize, you know, the top one, the top two, and the top of the class. I mean, National Honor Society to me, when you say that, is the top of your class, is the, the people that the focus has been on, well-rounded, but academics, and it's, it's, it's that really high, high honor.
And this is just-
And if it's only two or three-
An invitation to apply. That's not a, they're not automatically in if they have a 90 or higher. It's an invitation to apply to the Honor Society.
And I guess I feel it should be given to the best and the brightest.
And I think 90 and higher is obviously the best and the brightest, Jane. I mean, that's a lot of work and, and time, effort, and, like I said, all their other activities and-
Other thoughts? I've been asked, we've been asked to revisit, would somebody, do you wanna make a motion to that effect and see if someone seconds that?
Sure. I would like to make a motion that we-
Rescind our-
Rescind our vote and leave the National Honor Society requirements as they already stood.
Is there someone who wants to second that?
I voted no, can I second? Second?
Discussion?
And again, I'll just, I'll, I know I just made this discussion, but-
No, I think you made a good point.
My point is, the, the pressure and the stress that is already on our kids for the academics, the kids that are making these grades are making them without not being at the skin of their teeth. We're not talking about the kids that are, are in the low 90s. 95 is, is a, is a high grade. That is, that's all your A-plus students, and I just, I don't think the other kids should be counted out. They're, they're already putting a lot of effort in, and, and we put the pressure on them of, of knowing they have to be a 95 or higher to be invited.
I think if we're able to help with the comments from John Hopskins with, like, how we're kinda spoon-feeding some of these kids, if we kind of put them more responsible, their grades aren't gonna get as high as easily, they're gonna have to work harder as well, especially high school.
We're, we're gonna have our 50th graduation ceremony next year. This, this senior class is our 50th class. Why are we changing it now?
Well, and I think, I think to Tara's point, you're, if you're going to, if, if the goal is to change the rigor based off of the information that John Hopkins delivered tonight, the rigor's going to change, it's going to be even more difficult to get to that place. So, I, I mean, that was a really good point, Tara, that I overlooked.
So, do you not raise the bar on two things you're saying at the same time? Is that, is that what you're saying?
It's a good way to help me reword.
Well, no, I was trying to process your intent, like, I was trying to process the intent. So, what I said is, you know, and it was, what I said was, so what Tara's point was, is that by raising the bar on the quality of assessments, and, and that was my point, we shouldn't still be doing multiple-choice assessments, and you know that. So, if, if the high school will be working to increase the intake, the value of their assessments, that, so we're raising the bar there, and then to raise the bar on top of that to get 95, then does, is that, is that fair? I don't even know what the question is, but, and I, I guess, once you put that, once you put that other question in, then my, I guess I almost have a concern when I think about the fact that we don't have a measurement of these new-
Yeah, and everyone is, is being held to it.
New exam replacements.
What are we calling them?
And then how do you ever go backwards?
We're still finals and midterms, we're just, we're just doing it in a, in a more applied, in a different, kind of applied learning.
But what are we gonna do in two years? Are we going to-
Okay, you guys, let's one, one-
It's not our role to say, oh, let's do this, let's do that with this particular subject, right?
Who?
But we're going against the recommendation of the advisor, the principal, and apparently the national.
But the national has not changed. The national is 90.
Okay. Then, what did he say? Those surrounding schools? I'd just like to point that out. So, my, I mean, I'm not changing that vote, but-
And I put a lot of stock in the value of the opinion of Mr. Rowe, Mr. Dudek on the subject.
I, I would just like to hear from him then, on where he came to that conclusion, because if it was just so many kids got inducted this year, then that's not a good enough reason, that, then those kids deserved it. They earned it. If he, if they applied and they were all, I mean, I honestly, honestly don't know who goes through the applications after, is it just him? Or, you know, what, what type of rigor is on the application process? This is just an invitation to, to apply, it's not putting them in NHS.
The kids go through the applications with, with the advisor, the kids do it.
So, and if everyone, so everyone that got it this year earned it. It's not just because we had too many kids to make the grade.
But I don't think that's a question, I, I didn't hear that question.
Yeah, I didn't.
I did when, on the meeting that I watched, not tonight, because he didn't even have it on his list. When I was listening to it, I heard him say, we had too many kids this year, and I was like, how do you have too many? I mean, they're making the grade, so they earned it.
I think he just meant by that, Erin, that if, if, if it's that achievable, it might be time to look at the measure again. I think that's all he was trying to say.
But, but to your point, if it's that achievable, we need to look at all the things in the rigor.
Yeah, we do, we do.
That's, that's the big, that's the message that I'm hearing throughout all of the conversations.
Everything tonight.
Everything tonight stems from the rigor. So, if, if that's our focus next year, to Tara's point, we don't wanna do all this at once. Like, I get that, and I, and I totally understand your point going on, on what Mr. Dudek said, but our biggest concern, and it's, it was delivered tonight, is the rigor. So, we, we're talking about all these things, whether you're talking about high honors and raising the bar, or you're talking about assessments and changing the assessments, we need to look at the rigor of the kids that are going through the school, 180 days of rigor, not the one assessment, not the, you know what I mean? I, I really feel like that needs to be a huge focus, which it's going to be, I, it's, it's identified. That, that's the common-
And I just wanna make sure people are prepared for that, because you're, because, and, and I'm not weighing in on this, this isn't my decision, I'm none, but I mean, from, from the perspective of, you brought it up, when your kid doesn't make the honor roll, that's gonna be a problem for everybody. I don't mean your kid, but I mean, in general, when the, when the kid that typically makes the honor roll, and all of a sudden, the expectation shift, in the way that we're teaching shifts, the way they, like, you know, the, the kid that knows how to do school and can write the paper now has to do something very different. We all need to be prepared for that. That's a very big change.
But also, the kid who writes, who writes a paper might have a very difficult time doing that as well, because they're used to doing one thing.
That's what I'm saying, that's my point.
We're creating a society of everybody gets a trophy, and I don't like that.
You just proved my, yeah, that, that's, that's like what I was saying.
The teachers are making sure the kids are passing. Late work isn't big, you know, they, they aren't getting big deductions, they're helping make sure these kids get through, which is great, because I may have a child or two like that, but, so I see, you know, it's like, and I eat my breath in, I'm always saying, you're lucky, your teacher's nice, because I would've given you a zero. But I know that they are trying to work with the kids too, but I think, yeah.
With that being said, they're not the ones that are being invited to NHS.
No, but, well, but-
The 90s and higher, they're earning their grade, and it is very stressful. High school is, and we're, we're about to make it more stressful, which-
And I, and I get that, but I also know that raising the bar, and we saw it in the second grade, that was the second graders and with the third graders, when you do raise that bar, they will raise to the, they will rise to the occasion, they will.
No, without.
And, and I, you know, I-
What did she call it? Productive struggle.
Yep.
We have a question on this.
Okay, yes, we can. So, there is a motion to rescind the vote for the National Honor Society invitation to go out to those students at 95%. Those who wish to rescind would say aye, those who wish to remain, keep it at 95, as we voted earlier, would say nay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Abstentions.
I have a clarifying, can I just ask a clarifying question? Can we revisit this? Because here's, here's what I-
For the purpose of-
To, to somebody's point that we didn't hear from Mr. Rowe's, Mr. Rowe's thought process, first, one thing. Second, I would like to know what other districts are doing, because to Erin's point of, to Erin's point of, okay, Rhode Island College gets these six applications, three students are on National Honor Society, three are not. Well, the, were those three that were a 95 or a 90? So, I just, I guess I, that came into my mind.
We certainly, I mean, we certainly can, this is a, a printed handbook, and a printed handbook is gonna go out. We can certainly change it and, and, or online, we can certainly edit at any point in time. But to that point, I will tell you that high schools are not only, you know, not only looked at from a college recruitment standpoint in terms of a student is on National Honor Society, but rated as to how many are on the National Honor Society, how many are in the top, you know, whatever.
Per school, you're saying?
A school gets a rating, a school gets a, a rigor rating, if you will.
Okay.
And so, a school that has 100 National Honor Society out of 400 people is not, it's one of the checkmarks, a school that has 20 honor students out of, it's, it's, it's all, it's all a number, it's all a data, it's all data. Everything's data-driven, and everything, everything matters. It's a piece, and it's a tiny piece, and, so, yeah, we can, we can get data from the National Honor Society, we can get data from Mr. Rowe, but we're taking a vote tonight, so you can say yes, you can say no, or you can abstain.
Yep, yes, well, yes.
Yes to rescind, no to keep it the same.
Yes to rescind, no to keep it 95, keep it the same that we changed it.
Correct.
Or abstain.
Well, abstain just messes the whole thing up. I'd say no for tonight, and then, 'cause we can always revisit the other way as well.
How do you go backwards? So, now, in a year or two, we're gonna have someone come back and say, we need to lower it to 90? Are you lowering your standard because not enough kids are making it? You're never gonna go backwards from this. You're never gonna go backwards.
In a month, he can come and tell us his next meeting, we can ask for him to tell us why, we can ask for it to be on the agenda again.
Jane, did you skip over the facility report?
Did I, I did skip over the facility report.
The roof is getting mixed at the complex.
Okay.
Is insurance money being used to fix stuff?
The town is teasing that out in terms of how they wanna do that.
Still being, still, the insurance company stuff hasn't been-
They're, they're, I think they're kind of working with that, to decide whether they're gonna, which roof they're gonna take.
Okay.
What? Yes, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive session, not to return to the meeting to-
Some of.
Some of.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes.